It started at nine oh five AM Central Standard, so a few extra minutes.
Kamal, have a quick question. If an alderman is here and attendees, do we bring them in when their case is called or what they're for? Or should I just bring them in now?
Hey, thanks Kamal. You can just, you can bring them, them in now and we'll clarify which case they'll be on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And again, for everyone, we're going to start at nine oh five, so five minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sam.
Morning Alderman, how are you?
Good, haven't seen you in such a long, long time.
I know, pre pandemic, we gotta get together.
Yes, we do, hopefully soon.
Yes, yes, yes. How's the family? Everyone good?
Oh, knocking wood, yes. Thank you so much for asking. Yeah.
And, oh, hey Alderman, this is Chairman Knutson, just so I have it right. What, what matter are you here on?
Cause I'm not sure. Two two one dash two one dash S and the same number dash on Z as in Zebra.
Okay, got it.
And so.
We'll get to you, I think, not yet, but I, when we get started, I'll get to you because I understand you're gonna be requesting something upfront for that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let's get going. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the May twenty first, twenty twenty one virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Timmy Knutson. My pronouns are he, him, his, and I'm the chairman of the ZBA. Quick upfront, if you could mute your, your computer while you're not speaking, that would be great because we're getting some feedback. So everyone mute at this point in time. Okay, so in the rare instance that you haven't heard, Chicago is opening up. This is fantastic news for us all and particu- and in particular, for many of the applicants who come in front of our board seeking special use license to build their businesses. To those we've granted such permits to in the past, we wish you the best of luck in this new business atmosphere. To our loyal viewers, because I know we have many, I urge you to go out to treat yourself and support your local community restaurants and other businesses this weekend. They have been waiting for this opening moment and could use our support. Now onwards into our meeting. First, I'd like to take judicial notice of the fact that on April thirtieth, twenty twenty one, the governor of the state of Illinois signed a disaster proclamation declaring all counties of the state of Illinois a disaster area due to the COVID nineteen public health emergency. This disaster proclamation is in effect until May thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Thus, section seven E one of the open meetings act has been met. Second, I'm making a determination pursuant to section seven E two of the open meetings act, that an in-person meeting of the board is not practical or prudent. Similarly, I am also making a determination pursuant to section seven E five, that because of the disaster declared by the governor is unfeasible for at least one member of the zoning board of appeals or its chief administrative officer, or its chief legal officer to be physically present at the meeting place inasmuch as there is no physical meeting place. Third, this meeting will operate under the emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public board meetings and provisions for remote public participation, promulgated first by my predecessor and now by me, and which are posted to the board's website. I encourage everyone who frequently appears before the board to familiarize yourselves with these emergency rules, especially my recent March twenty second, twenty twenty one updates, as we do not know how long the COVID nineteen public health emergency will last. In line with these emergency rules, today's meeting of the zoning board of appeals is a virtual meeting that is being simulcast to the general public via live streaming. It is also being recorded. We've established these virtual hearings in keeping with the governor, the general assembly, the mayor and city council's goal to continue government functions while maintaining transparency and public safety. But there are technical limitations to this format that we must collectively manage, particularly with respect to the presentation of new evidence during a hearing, the ability for applicants and objectors to resolve objections or amend proposals during the hearing, and the participation of large numbers of people. As a result, any material to be presented to the board, whether by applicants or members of the public, was required to be submitted in advance of the meeting. And in addition, everyone wishing to testify at today's hearing, whether on behalf of an applicant or in opposition, was required to register prior to today's meeting. For those of you who do not regularly appear before the board, I will go over a few things for those of you participating in the meeting. Number one, we are operating under the emergency rules. So for all applicants, objectors and their attorneys, if you did not send us your exhibits by the cutoff date and time, you will not be able to reference them. Number two, all participants will be listed as attendees within the Zoom meeting until your matter is called. At that time, we will transfer you to a panelist. There will be a short switch over where you will lose the feed, so don't be surprised by that. Number three, once you are set as a panelist, please present your case. Board staff will be presenting the PowerPoint exhibits for everyone as we normally do, so you will not need to manage sharing your screen. Number four, please be mindful of background noise and please mute yourself when you're not speaking at all times, including now. If I hear feedback, I'll just remind the whole group. Number five, in addition, please note that we have a court reporter preparing our record, so it is important that two people do not speak at the same time. You might see me muting someone if that happens. Number six, if you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the live stream. This will cause audio interference. I'm going to repeat that. If you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the live stream in tandem. Number seven, please make sure you identify yourself whenever you are speaking. This goes for attorneys, applicants, members of the public and for board commissioners. Since all of us are remote, we and our court reporters cannot always see who is talking at any given time. I will also be administering oaths for each witness individually to accommodate for this. Number eight, if an applicant or anyone in opposition to the application has any technical issues presenting their case and is unable to proceed, we will attempt to continue the matter until the end of the call to create time to resolve the issues. If unsuccessful, we will continue the matter until a subsequent hearing. Number nine, after your matter or matters are concluded, please leave the Zoom meeting. If you are interested in continuing to watch our meeting, which I hope that you are, I encourage you to watch the live stream, which is accessible from the website. Fourth, I'd like everyone to know, especially those that frequently appear before the board, that we have made changes to the proposed findings of fact forms and cannabis community meeting affidavits. As a relatively new chairman, I have the goal of making the board more efficient and modern where appropriate. These changes will be the first of more to come. The revised forms are available on the board's website and we expect these forms to be used going forward. Some of the changes to the forms are just for, just for us to streamline. For instance, now that the forms are due to the board earlier in the process, you don't know your calendar number or hearing date at the time they're submitted. So we've removed those sections. We've also added some lines into our cannabis findings of fact forms that reference our COVID supplemental community meeting rule. The bigger changes are as follows, and this will probably be the month, the last month that I go over them, as we may push out subsequent changes. First, the forums are now general, gender neutral, as are the form affidavits. However, please make sure that you continue to have individuals fill out the form affidavits. For variations, we've created a reasonable economic analysis form that developers need to fill out. Finally, for cannabis meeting affidavits, we've clarified that we require both the notice of publication and the certificate of publication. This means we want both a copy of the published notice and the certificate of publication of the notice from the newspaper. Previously, we just stated that we wanted proof of publication, which led to some of you providing various items. But what we want is the actual certificate of publication, that is the affidavit from the newspaper stating that it was published. We've allowed a slight grace period with respect to the old firm, the old forms. This grace period has expired. As a reminder, for any matter filed on or after May first, twenty twenty one, we will not accept old forms. Let me repeat that. For any matter filed on or after May first, twenty twenty one, we will not accept old forms. You're all on notice and we'll need you to use the new, new forms. For those of you that have been using the new forms, thank you very much. And I especially want to thank those attorneys that are providing the reasonable return economic analysis and pictures of the block. It makes it the board's hearing on the application much more efficient and, which is all of one of our goals. Now, I'd like to call this virtual meeting of the zoning, zoning board of appeals to order. I will take a roll call to establish quorum. Commissioners, after I call your name and you state that you are present, please verify this time that you can hear and see me. Commissioner Saul.
President, I can hear and see you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
President, I can hear and see you.
Great. Commissioner Esposito.
Present, I can hear and see you.
Commissioner Toya.
Present, and I can hear and see you.
Great, I'm present. Quorum is established. The meetings of the April sixteenth, twenty twenty one meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the meetings from April sixteenth, twenty twenty one are approved. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, today's agenda has been approved. Now, I'm going to take continuances and withdrawals. So if you are on the line for a continuance and withdrawal, I'm going to go down the ones that I've, I've been notified are going to happen and then we'll open it up to anyone else who hasn't been called. So first up, two hundred dash twenty one dash S.
Um, thank you. Mr. Chairman, am I being recognized?
No, Mr. Chairman, this is Victor with the zoning board. On behalf of the applicant, case number two hundred twenty one S is going to be withdrawn.
Great.
Page three. And then case number two oh two twenty one S on page four, thirty one forty four through seventy, North Clyburn, thirty one forty five Northwestern is also going to be withdrawn.
Right, got it. Um. Okay, great. And Victor, did you have something for two oh five dash twenty one dash?
Uh, actually, the attorney is on the line.
Great.
So he will request.
So let's call, if the attorney's on the line, feel free to unmute yourself. I don't have in my notes who the attorney is, so. Okay, how about, we'll circle back to that. How about for calendar number two nineteen dash twenty one dash Z? And this is at nineteen twelve North Orchard Street. Victor, it doesn't sound like they're here. I know that they have requested continuance by email. Can you just confirm that so I can give the continuance on the record?
Correct, for two nineteen on Orchard, that's attorney John Pekarski, and he did send an email requesting a continuance.
Great, okay.
Okay, how do I unmute myself? Because I know.
John, are you there?
No, that, that's Paul Kopeck. He's for two oh five.
I got it. We're going to go ahead and continue calendar number two nineteen dash twenty one dash Z to July sixteenth, twenty twenty one. So two meetings from now. Okay, next up, um, uh, you've got two twenty five dash twenty dash S. Okay, so doesn't sound like the applicant is here, but they were requesting a special use for a pawn shop at a location and there is an inability to have a pawn shop at this location. So we are going to dismiss this matter on its own motion. So that's for calendar number two twenty five dash twenty dash S.
And Chairman.
Yeah.
Chairman, this is Victor again. The attorney for that matter was Patrick Turner. He was signed in, but I don't see him here, but there is another pawn shop.
He's under panelist, Victor.
Okay, Patrick, if you want to go ahead and address that issue.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Could you clarify that the case number?
Yeah, this is two twenty five dash twenty dash S. Should be twenty one dash S, I believe.
Thank you. I believe that's, that's how it appears on the agenda.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Turner got disconnected. He was here under panelist.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and dismiss this. There's been conversation in the background and we have all the notice and emails. So again, two twenty five dash twenty one dash S will be dismissed. Um, okay, Alderman Maldonado, will you remind me what matter you're here on?
Yes, um, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, for granting me this moment to request a continuance on item two two one, two one dash five, I believe, and then two two one, two, two one dash Z as you said. So I respectfully request a continuance until your next meeting. Only I can elaborate as to my request for, my request for the continuance, if you wish to hear me.
Yeah, that would be great. And first, I'm just going to check to see if the applicant is here as well, so that they can speak on this. The applicant here is three two, three nine, Division LLC.
Chairman.
Yeah.
Hi, it's Tom Rains here, representing the applicant. The applicant is on as well.
Oh, great, okay. So Tom, as you've heard, there's been a continuing request, so you can address that.
So, so normally, in a case like this, when an alderman would ask for a continuance, and they did ask us yesterday, we would typically oblige. The, the request for the continuance just seems to be an extension of the alderman's opposition. We have no community opposition. We, we sent the notice letter out. We didn't get a single call or inquiry. We actively reached out to the adjacent neighbors. We spoke to the neighbor next door. Just so you know, this is a vacant lot. So we spoke to the neighbor next door, Mr. Fabian Pagan, on the eleventh of May, and he seemed to have no opposition. We tried several times to reach out to the neighbor on the other side at thirty two, thirty seven, which is Mr. Louis Erzate, and we had no luck. His phone was not in service. But we've had, we've had no inquiries, no objections. The, we, we did meet with the alderman. We, we tried for about a month to get ahold of the alderman. We finally were able to set up a Zoom on the seventeenth. And he, he informed us that he was not in favor of this because there was a designation pending to make this area Puerto Rican town, which I think is admirable, but I don't know why it would affect residential on the ground floor as on our side of the street, there's seven buildings, both, both adjacent, on both sides of us, they're all ground floor residential. And so I just, the, the only reason I would object to the continuance is because I think it's just a continuance to get a continuance to sort of obstruct our application. I don't know that, we haven't had a discussion as to, you know, the height of the building, the size of the building, the number of units. There, there was, there was no input from the alderman one way or another on that. It's not like we're negotiating some resolution or trying to appease some neighbors. So I, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, Chairman.
Okay, and, and with that, Alderman Maldonado, can you just give us an overview of your reasoning for requesting continuance?
Yes, um, if I may. Number one, I, um, back in, about a year ago, or two years ago, we passed a resolution in the city council to rename Division Street as Puerto Rico Town from Western all the way to Grand Avenue. Um, coupled with that was a proposed statue that was, that has been heard in the General Assembly to designate Division Street as Puerto Rico Town. With that statue, and it, and it's been already adopted in the Senate, and the House will be voting on it next week. It will require from a board established by the community of stakeholders to, to design a plan of revitalization within the cultural framework of Puerto Rico Town. So therefore, the need for B types properties along the stretch or strip of Division Street is essentially, is very, very important. And, um, you know what? And, and in reaction to Mr. Rain's comment, I'm, I'm perplexed by his comment because I spoke with one of the attorneys or one of his partners on the seventeenth, like he acknowledged. And, um, and the attorney was very sympathetic and understanding and led me to believe that they were not going to pursue with the, with, with the request that they have now before you. So I was blind, blind sighted by them, and it was yesterday that the Department of Planning indicated to me of the plans by the attorneys to pursue with these zoning amendment requests. And so because of, because I do have, and we have the, the, both the senator and the state rep that introduced and passed these pieces of legislation in the General Assembly, and we have a number of community leaders and stakeholders that are willing and ready to testify before this hearing, having been given ample time to do so, we would be ready to debate and argue the merits of the request of that, that, that the request by the, the attorney Ryan on behalf of this developer should not be granted.
Okay.
First floors should be commercial along Division Street, and we don't, we do not oppose building residential on the second, third and fourth floor.
Yep, okay. So I, I believe that Senator Pacián Azias is on. Senator, if you want to say something quick strictly related to the continuance, we're not hearing anything on the merits right now, but you can go right ahead.
Yeah, um, I thank you for recognition, Chair, and thank you, Alderman Maldonado, for bringing this to my attention. Prior to actually entering the general assembly, I co-chaired the Puerto Rican agenda and to what Alderman Maldonado is speaking to, it is essentially this plan that we have conceived at a community level. I understand that some of the regulations that you all are discussing are to speak to the adjacent neighbors. But I guess my question is, had there been any kind of discussions with community groups? Because there is an ordinance on file, there is this statute that is currently under consideration. And, and to the point of that first floor, the idea of the plans that this specific community has conceived has a very clear vision about establishing kind of a Main Street kind of feel. And so this would totally undermine the overall vision for that community plan. And I would welcome the developer to come and present to the Puerto Rican agenda and those that have been involved to fully understand intention and what the, the intended impact is for this particular project.
Okay, yeah, and thank you, thank you, everyone. So, um, and thanks for, you know, sticking to the, the continuance. I think what we do here, and the only person who might be mad at me is my staff, because I was told not to push anything to June. I was told to push to July. But I think we give a one-month continuance as somewhat of an attempt at like a timing compromise. So if all of you will, will, you know, in that one-month talk and we will hear this matter on June eighteenth, twenty twenty one. Um, and again, I believe that is matter, sorry, I'm losing my numbering.
Two twenty one, twenty one S.
Right, yeah, two twenty one dash twenty one dash S and two twenty two dash twenty one dash Z. No further notice will be given, so make sure if anyone is signing on either as expert or in support or opposition, that they sign up by our deadlines.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I see that John Pekarski has his hand raised on two twenty dash twenty one dash Z. Hey, John, John, go ahead. Okay, any other requests for continuance or withdrawal? I see, oh, I see Council Barnes and Fatikas. Go right ahead.
Morning Chairman, it's Nick Fatikas from the Laws of Sanbanks. On the top of page four, it's matter number two oh three, twenty one S. We have been in communication with the Department of Planning and we're looking to make a few adjustments to get their recommendation of approval for the special use at that property. Again, it's twenty seven thirty four through fifty eight, North Cicero, item two oh three, twenty one S. I, I know you, you had mentioned that continuances were going into July. I have to, on behalf of my client, request a possible one-month continuance. We're trying to resolve a curb cut issue, and if we do, we're not aware of any objection. We, we, we just want to resolve this and again, have DPD support going forward.
Okay, yeah, so let's grant the continuance, Nick. I'm on pretty strict guidelines on dates right now. So we're going to continue this one, two oh three dash twenty one dash S to our July meeting, which I apologize for, but July sixteenth, twenty twenty one.
I, I had to ask, Chair.
Of course. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, John Pikarski, I see your hand is still raised. We just can't hear you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Am I coming through?
Yes, yes, we can hear you now. Go right ahead.
If I may beg your indulgence to revisit the property at nineteen twelve North Orchard Street, number two nineteen dash twenty one dash Z. I know that you've announced the difficulty with continuing one month. However, this is an eight million dollar, single-family home that needs to get under construction. And of course, we are so close to total unanimity with the Aldermanic office as well as the adjacent neighbors. I would beg your indulgence to continue at one month.
Yeah, John, sorry. And I actually wasn't even, I didn't know from my review of the application that you were attorney on this one. Yeah, no. So it looks like, and I understand, but it looks like we we absolutely have to go into July. So what we have on the record stands, this continuance will go to July 16, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, thank you. Okay, the one matter that I don't believe we fully sorted out that I had on my list was nineteen, sorry, not two nineteen. Maybe we're good. Are there any other continuance to continuance requests online?
Chairman, for some reason, we had Attorney Patrick Turner and Paul Coltech had raised their hands. So I brought them in as panelists, but I don't know if they want to speak.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep, hey, Bob.
How are you? Hope everybody's well. Thank you. I apologize. This is regarding page four, two five dash two one S. I know your staff is going to be angry, but I'm going to ask for an early date. There's only one issue on this. We met with the alderman. The alderman asked for this continuance. And it is the whether a pork chop for the driveway is appropriate. CDOT has indicated it is not. We're trying to negotiate back and forth with CDOT. So we'd like an early date. The community group would like a pork chop, and that that's the whole issue.
Okay. And I see Steve Valenziano has his hand raised. So go right ahead, Steve.
Steve Valenziano, Department of Planning and Development. If if we could, I know that we are very tight, I'm very aware. But if we could get a one-month, we just had a meeting the other day with the alderman, the applicant, and with CDOT, and we're trying to work out some very minor final details. So if we could, if they could get the June date, I think it would be fair because they really have been working with us on this project.
Yeah, I'm sorry, everyone. I've got to go with equity on this. We're way crushed for June right now. So I understand, but I also understand how these things can go and conversations can take longer than intended. So July 16 is the date. We're going to hear all these past few on that date, and it'll give ample time to be ready, and I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more indulgence? That is, on page 10, on the continuances, case number four two zero two zero S is in Sam. We made this presentation last month. The only issue, the applicant testified, the our Mr. Wasnicki testified, our architect testified, there was only one issue, and that was the number of dogs that would be allowed. And I do want to give credit to Mr. Valenziano because he actually did a lot of research. We did a lot of research on what would be best, we believe, for the dogs and their care at this site. We have an agreement for the number of dogs and the site plan. The only thing I'm asking for is I certainly will be available at that time, but I'm wondering if I could have my experts not available since they've already testified, and I can take their testimony and provide it to this date.
Yeah, okay. And and I do apologize. We're for the for the sake of the record. And as you know, we draft a lot of opinions on these matters. A lot of people on this call will never see these opinions, but at times are, which you are aware of, our board does go to court. We will need the experts present. And, you know, I know that's, I know that's the end of the day. So if you want to communicate or have the experts communicate with staff to get some type of alert or notice, that might be the best route here, but we're gonna, we're gonna need them on.
Thank you very much for your consideration. I appreciate it. You will.
For sure. Yep, thanks. All right, final, final ask for everyone, continuances and withdrawals.
Excuse me, this is Commissioner Esposito. Could you, once more, the continuance we just discussed on page four, could you repeat the number, please? The one related to CDOT.
So that was.
I think it was page four.
Yes, so that, go ahead.
Two oh five dash twenty one S, forty six forty nine Cicero.
Thank you very much.
Right, that was two oh five dash twenty one dash S. Okay, good. Any, anything else? All right, let's get into it. First up, we're going to call calendar number one eighty seven dash twenty one dash S. And it's Nail Riot Corporation. So if Dewan Stevens is present, let us know. Well, while Dewan is getting situated, I'll swear in Jeanette Velazquez, who will read the recommendation on the behalf of the Department of Planning and Development. So Jeanette, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Great. Like I said, you're with DPD. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and read the recommendation, please.
For twenty six forty three West Seventy Ninth Street, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed nail salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds a nail salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. And lastly, the proposed nail salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Great. And you know, we're going to go ahead and take this one with one eighty eight dash twenty one dash S. Same applicant. So let's, let's first confirm if Dewan Stevens is on. If we can confirm that they would like us to do that because it's the same applicant owner, but it's slightly different entity name.
Hi, yes, this is Dewan Stevens. I am present, and I agree to move forward with doing both.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dewan. Great. So Jeanette, will you also read the recommendation for one eighty eight dash twenty one dash S?
Yes. So for one eighty eight dash twenty one dash S, that's for twenty six forty five West Seventy Ninth Street. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed beauty salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the beauty salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and is also designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Great, thank you very much. And Dewan, if you're still there, if you could give us an overview of what brings you here today.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you see me?
Yes, I can. So actually, I should swear you in first. So if you could say your name and address.
My name is Dewan Stevens. Address is ninety one forty three South Dobson, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six one nine.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. Okay, go right ahead.
So today I'm appearing before the zoning board in order to receive our special use permit or proceed our application for licensing for both Urban Lux Salon and Nail Riot, which is a nail salon. The nail salon located twenty six forty three and Urban Lux Salon located at twenty six forty five West Seventy Ninth Street. Urban Lux Salon on, I'm sorry, on West Seventy Ninth would actually be our second location. We're currently had our first location, which we opened last year during the pandemic at sixty eighth and Ashland. So this is our second time going through this process with the zoning board. And we've done very well, and we're very happy to have experienced growth and be able to move forward and open a second location here. We have garnered support of both our or all of our landlord as well as the neighboring residents. And even with our locations being in a mixed-use property, our neighbors, residential neighbors upstairs from the businesses are very excited to have us join them in the building.
Great. And just for clarification, are you the owner of both of the entities?
Yes, I am the owner of Urban Lux Salon, and then I do have a co-owner of Nail Riot.
Perfect. And in operation, will they be functioning together, or will they be side-by-side kind of separate front door shops?
That's a great question. They will actually be two separate entities. Of course, we could definitely have the same client and service the same client, but they would go from one location to the other. It is very exciting that I was able to find, find a location where we had two storefronts right next door to each other. So we're really excited about that, to offer both services to one particular client, but they won't pass through. They would actually have to leave one unit and go outside to the other.
Yeah, great. Okay, cool. You know, any questions from the board? Sounds like none. So Ms. Stevens, thanks for your time today and good luck throwing out your business.
Thank you so much, zoning board and chairman. I appreciate you.
Yep, have a great weekend.
You also. Bye-bye.
All right, next up, we're going to calendar number one eighty nine dash twenty one dash S. And that's at seven oh eight North Wells Street. I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation here. So for calendar number one eighty nine dash twenty one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed body art service, microblading. So if Constance Latham is on, let us know. I see you.
Hi.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
My name is Constance McLatham, and my address is thirty one zero one West Washington Boulevard.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
All right, what brings you here?
Hi, so I am Constance, and I'm the owner of Maven Aesthetics, which is a restorative tattoo and waxing studio. I've been in business for five years now, this May. And despite the unfortunate circumstances surrounding COVID at my previous location, I was able to move into this new location. And so I am applying for special use to transfer my body art license for microblading from my previous location in the Gold Coast to my new location at seven oh eight North Wells.
Okay, great. And yeah, and so clearly, how, I know you said, but how many years in operation has the other location been in?
Five years. So I first did this process back in 2016, so it's a little new to me on Zoom, but.
And it's all new faces except for one, I think. Okay, great. So clearly, operations have been, have been going well for five years. Is this mostly, are you growing at all, or is it just kind of a strategic shift of location?
Um, yes. So I'm kind of just a strategic shift of location that came actually from a little bit of an unfortunate circumstance, but definitely ended up being a blessing in disguise. And so my goal was always to, at least at Span, to be able to have someone that I could mentor and just inspire to grow in the aesthetics field. I'll still be the only person that does brow microblading because everyone knows that that service is something that I am known for. So I will have someone eventually just take on the waxing services that I don't have that much time to do. But hopefully, yes, I'll probably see you guys in a few years for another location, possibly.
Or should this go well, you might see us in your shop.
Yes.
Okay, any questions, any questions from board? All right, Ms. McLatham, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you for coming. Oh, sorry. And one last thing, do you, I know you actually have an expert present.
Oh, yes, Peter.
We should, we should get Peter on the record. Peter. Oh, yeah, I see you. I see you. Okay, great. Peter, will you say your name and address for the record?
Peter Pulis, offices at fifty five hundred Pearl Street, Rosemont, Illinois, six zero zero one eight.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And we acknowledge your expertise based on many past appearances. Anything else you want to add?
No, everything, you know, everything that I would testify to is in the report. You know, this is a, within an existing, within an existing unit, I mean, it meets all the criteria of the specialty standards.
Yeah, okay, great. And Ms. McLatham, one more question comes to mind. I know the move was due to an unfortunate circumstance. Was that related to your lease?
It was.
Yeah. Okay, did the lease, can you expound on that a little bit?
Sure. I actually was, unfortunately, I was illegally evicted from my studio. And so it's a matter that my lawyer and I are hoping to resolve soon. But yeah, I kind of was just forced in a, in a crazy way, but in a very good way to get into this space. But yeah, I, my lease was terminated unbeknownst to me. And so that is what kind of made this all happen.
Okay, got it. Just wanted to clarify for the record. Okay, just confirming, any more questions from the board? All right, Ms. McLatham, again, thank you for your time, and we'll take this under consideration.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we're moving to calendar number one ninety dash twenty one dash S. And Jeanette from the Department of Planning and Development will read this recommendation as it's prosaid.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Jeanette Velazquez. And the, I'm here to read the recommendation letter for nineteen thirty seven East Eighty Seventh Street. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon slash barber shop. The department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon and barber shop will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and is lastly designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you, Jeanette. Okay, is Kentrell Streeter present? Kentrell, I believe you have to unmute yourself. I see you on the list of panelists. And now I can see you. Video's good, just the sound.
Okay.
There we go. I hear you.
Okay.
Great. Kentrell, can you please, can you please state your name and address for the record?
So what you say? I can't really hear you. I can't really hear you now. Okay. Hello?
Hey, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Okay, my name is Kentrell Streeter, and the address is nineteen thirty seven East Eighty Seventh Street.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the Great. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, cool. Mr. Streeter, what brings you here today?
Okay, what's bring, what's bringing, brings me here today is that I'm trying to open up a barber shop at this address. I've been looking for a barber shop for the past maybe two, two years now. Now, I had a barber shop previously at 648 East 79th Street and, and, but, but my barber shop burned down. So like my barber shop burned down in 2018. I opened up in '06, 2006. So I'm familiar with owning a barber shop. I had my shop for like maybe 12 years, 12, 13 years. So with that being said, I know all the ins and outs about owning a barber shop. And so every since I, every since I, my barber shop burned down, all my, I had like four barbers that was, that was with me. And they have like, like they go into different barber shops to cut hair. But it's like being, when you've been around somebody for so long, you'll, you'll become a family. So with that being said, I would, I would like to open up this shop and bring all my barbers back home to me. Cause I'm, I've been cutting hair for all my life. I've been cutting hair for like maybe 30 years. So, so as soon as I opened up, I knew about this pandemic. I'm gonna have hand sanitizer at every station. Like everyone has to wear a mask just to come in the shop. And I'mma maintain a clean work environment. So I just wanna, I hope you all will help me opening up.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Streeter. And just because, only because on this one, we have a letter from the older woman in objection. I'm wondering if I could hear about, did you all communicate at all, you and the older woman?
No, no, never. E- even though, even though I tried to reach out to her, but, but the alderman never came back to me and responded.
Okay, yeah. And I don't believe it. I'm gonna check. I don't believe she is on this call. Okay, so I just want to bring up though, two things that she referenced in her letter and then we can, we can open up for questions. Are you already operating at this location?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay, so technically this, you're in illegal operation currently and you're here to try to make it legal.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so first thing first, I've gotta say it because we're on the call, you should not illegally operate a business in the city. And the older woman did point that out in there. The other item I want to bring up and only because she put it in writing on this application is she talked about neighbor complaints about both sound, I believe, and smell of cannabis coming from the shop. You can rebut, you can rebut that. I just want to give you the opportunity.
Okay, okay. Now, okay, so I don't know what she's talking about because I'm there from the morning time from about 10 to about 7:00 and then I leave. So and like, and like basically every client that come in, they're on appointment. So I don't have a lot of clients in there at all. Like I may, okay. Okay, like I have an, a set appointment. I have, I have an appointment book. So every client that calls me or I write their name down and then when I call them, they come in, come get their haircut and then they leave out. So it's like, I don't, I don't have like a lot of people in there. It's just me. It's just me and my client and then I leave.
Got it. And have you talked with the neighboring residences or businesses about, you know, opening up legally with a permit?
Okay, now, now what I did was I asked the owner of the building, Mr. Hicks. I asked him if I can go inside the shop and cut hair until I get my license. And, and the owner, Mr. Hicks, said it was okay, which is just make sure that you try and get that license. So that's why I'm here today trying to get the license.
Got it. Okay. All right, questions from the board?
I've got one question. When did you start cutting hair at this location?
Uh, I wanna say, uh, it may be like January.
Of this year?
Yes, like, okay, late part of January.
Okay.
Late part of January.
Thank you.
But, 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 um, I, I had the lease for the, for the, for the building in like September or maybe like October, but, but I was hesitant about moving in because I didn't have the lease. But, but then, you know, I've been trying to get my, my license, so I was doing all the running around. And then the last shop I was in prior to this, they closed down. So I didn't want to have all the people coming to my home and I was gonna cut hair at home and it's a pandemic going on. And I, and they know, I have a wife, a child at home, so I didn't want those clients coming to my home because I didn't want all that confusion.
Thank you.
So I asked my, I asked the owner of the building, Mr. Hicks, can I go inside the storefront and cut hair? And he said, he said, well, he said, well, you can, you can go in there, but just don't have any people in there. So I went in there and started cutting hair.
Yeah, we should just say for the reference that landlords should be, landlords should be clear with potential SEs about the licensing requirements. Okay, other questions from the board?
Hi, this is Joanne Saul. I have one. If you know, can you speak about other barber shops or hair salons in the immediate area?
Uh, I don't know a shop called Brotherhood. That's a, that's like, like three blocks down the street from, from, from my location.
Are there any others on this block that you're around?
No, no, no.
This is Commissioner Esposito. So just to clarify the last commissioner's question. So the, in the photo here, we see something called Larrie's Beauty Salon, correct?
Right.
Is that your neighbor?
No. Okay, okay. She had the shop prior.
I see.
Me. And so, and so what it is, it used to be a beauty shop there already. But, but, but the owner told me that, that she passed away from COVID-19.
That's, I'm sorry to hear that, but thank you for clarifying that. And then I have one other question. Mr. Streeter, you do have a valid barber's license, is that?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Great. Yeah, that's a good clarification. Thank you commissioners. Okay, any other questions? All right, Mr. Streeter, Streeter, we'll take this under consideration and thank you for your time today.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Anna? Okay, let's move right along to calendar number 191-21-Z at 1944 North Albany Avenue. Ryan McGovern, McGovern, let us know if you're here.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Yes, I am present.
Okay, great. Great. Mr. McGovern, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Ryan McGovern and I'm currently living at 1944 North Albany.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Perfect. All right. What brings you here today? And I know, I believe you have an, an expert is Mr. Israel. Is he an architect or?
He is, and he is also on the call. So if you want him to swear him in.
We'll, we'll swear him in and then you can both speak. So Mr. Israel, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Todd Israel, 4878 North Sheridan, number three. I recently moved, so I don't know if that matters for the records, but.
No, but don't worry about it. So do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. All right, Mr. McGovern, go right ahead and tell us a bit about what brings you here today.
Sure. So I am the applicant owner and primary resident in the building located at 1944 North Albany. Here before you today, seeking the board's approval for a variation to reduce required setbacks in order to construct a covered front porch. By way of background, the building is a three-story, two-unit building constructed in 1890s, 1890, and it lays on its original footprint. The hardship to construction in the front porch is, is apparent because the building has a non-conforming footprint. Both the north wall and south wall of the home lie within one foot of the property line. The home is abnormally wide at 24.3 feet wide for a standard Chicago lot. And as such, any permitted landing porch or entry will be in violation of setback zoning laws. The granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or interest to other properties or improvements in the neighborhood. We believe that the design of the porch will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area. And so with that, Todd has a couple of statements about the actual construction of the front porch. And just to clarify, there is a number of other construction happening around the house, siding, windows. But this variation setbacks are strictly for the porch being constructed on the front of the home.
Yep, and I'd like to add that we're seeking front yard relief because according to the 80-acre map, the front yard setback is actually 16 feet. None of the houses to the south of this property are setback that far. And actually, the average of the two lots to the south, which is sort of the standard determination for front setback, are well forward of the porch that we're proposing. The side setbacks, because this is a, a front porch and not just stairs accessing the apartment units, we need to comply with the required side setbacks for the building. In this case, the doors to the unit are located on the south side of the front wall. So we can't put the stairs north of where we're showing them. And so we're proposing this, this solution. We're working with the building department to have a two-hour firewall between the porch and the south property line because it's so close. So we're going through alternative code review for that. And Bob Fallstrom has indicated that he would sign off on it. So I think those are, I think that's, that's essentially what we're trying to do.
Got it. And is the, the existing kind of, you know, landing or front porch entry into the building, is that technically not inconformity, just?
It's, it's inconformity currently because it's not, it's not actually a porch. It's just, it's stairs and it's, it's egress access. The fact that we're expanding the porch basically across the whole front of the building makes it more than just, more than just egress.
Great. Do we have an aerial shot over, this is me talking to staff more so, do we have an aerial shot over the building? Ah, got it. Good. So this is helpful actually because we can see the setbacks of the properties to the south. Any questions from the board? Okay, Mr. McGovern, we'll take this under consideration.
Okay, thank you for your time, Commissioner.
Sorry, I might be frozen. One second.
Chairman, you were good.
Come, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear and see you. Now you just turned off your video, but.
Yeah, I turned off my video to try to save Wi-Fi, in case there is a problem. Were there any questions from the board? Everyone froze for me for a second. Okay, I'm hearing none. So, Mr. McGovern, thank you so much for coming today and we'll take this under consideration.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner and other members of the board.
Yep, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, just because of Zoom paranoia, I encourage anyone to, if I ever am frozen, to just like scream or message me or something, just so I don't start going. Okay, let's move on to calendar number 192-21-Z. This is at 2140 West 21st. All right, do we have Danny Nieto and Olivia Nieto?
Hello, Danny, are you there?
David, are you, are you the, the architect or?
I'm the draftsman.
Okay. Let's see if we can get Danny, if we can get Danny and Olivia. I see Daniel Nieto on, and Camelia Nieto on our panelist list, just sounded videos off.
How's it going, Mr. Chairman?
There we go. Good, good. Is this Mr. Nieto?
Yes, sir.
Great. Okay, Mr. Nieto, can you please state your name and address?
My name is Daniel Nieto. My address is 2140 West 21st Street, Chicago, Illinois 60608.
Great. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Perfect. And do you have a, is Olivia, is, I'm sorry, Camelia Nieto on?
Yeah, she's on, she's on, she's on. Well, I'm with her as we speak. I just came outside of you, but, but yeah, she's on Zoom also.
Great. You know, to the extent she will speak on this matter as well, we'll get her sworn in.
Okay, yeah.
Great. Ms. Nieto, will you please state your name and address as well?
Hi, good morning. My name is Camelia Nieto. My address is 2140 West 21st Street, Chicago, Illinois 60608.
Great. And if you, if you, Dan and Camelia, if you, if you're both in the same room, if you can either condense onto one screen or, or leave the room just because we're gonna get feedback if you're close to each other on different.
Okay, I guess we could, how about like this?
That's great. So if you could turn off, sorry, if you could turn off your other device completely so that we don't get the feedback. All right, it sounds, it sounds better. Let's see. Ms. Nieto, so do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I think they disconnected the device that they were on, so.
Okay, let's see.
Okay, so we're on this one now. Can you guys?
Okay, perfect. So, so this is, this question's for Ms. Nieto. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you so much. And what brings you both here today?
Yeah, we're, we're seeking a variation to reduce the required minimum lap area from 3,000 feet. From, I mean, yeah, from 3,000 feet to 2,995.2 square feet for our three-dwelling unit that we're trying to do an addition to the house.
Great. Is it current, will you remind the board, is it currently a three-dwelling unit or is this part of a conversion?
No, yeah, it's, it's a two-dwelling unit now and we're trying to seek the variation for, make a addition for three dwelling.
Great, so.
I, I, I'm sorry. I, I spoke to the neighbors around that they support me. I spoke to Diego Morales from the alderman's office. He, he also supports my project.
Okay, great. And, and the project, just to repeat for the board, is you're constructing a new third floor. Is that correct? So you're building up?
Yes, correct. Yeah, the family got a little too big now and we're all cramped up in the homes we live in now. My kids, my brother's kids, my sister, everybody, we all live here. So it's like a family.
Okay, great. So you're gonna continue living in it?
Yeah, yeah, correct. We've been, we've been here 30 years already, so we're not trying to go nowhere.
That's great. Okay, perfect. Let's put your architect draftsman on the record. So I believe that's Mr. Cordova. Can you please state your name and address?
Yes, hello. My name is David Cordova and my address is 2218 West 18th Place, Chicago, Illinois 60608.
Great. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Mr. Cordova, is there anything else you want to add on this matter?
Uh, no, every, the drawing set is pretty much all here. And it seems like the the biggest issue is just the lot size in regards to being able to construct Mr. Nieto's third dwelling unit.
Okay, good. Questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. I have a question for Mr. Cordova. Can you tell us who the licensed architect who stamped these drawings is and what your relation to that person is?
Yes. His name is Luis A. Martinez, and I do jobs under him as well as do certain freelance things. And just like this project was, so I would, I would consult with him, and he would help guide me through it. So that's.
So you are under his supervision?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, any other questions from the board? Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Nieto, we'll take this under consideration, and thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You guys be safe. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you. Enjoy the weekend.
Thank you, too.
Okay, calendar number one ninety-three dash twenty-one dash Z, which is at twenty-eight sixty West Giddings Street. And we've got Rolando Acosta as counselor here. So Rolando, let me know when you're present.
Just making sure, Mr. Chairman, that everybody else is on, and actually, Imena, I don't know if she's been upgraded from my office, was going to present this case. She is on.
Yes.
I'll turn it over to Imena.
Great, perfect. Hi, Imena.
Hi, I don't know if you guys can see me.
Yes, we've got you. We've got you.
Can't see myself, but you say it's okay, it's okay. Okay. Good morning. Oh, there I am. Okay. Good morning. My name is Imena Castro. I'm a zoning attorney, a zoning attorney at Acosta Esger. And one of the attorneys for the matter before you today, present on this call should be the applicant and homeowner Jen Eisenberg and the project architect Linda Konoski. Are you ladies present on the call?
Yes.
Wonderful. Jen, can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Jennifer Eisenberg, twenty-eight sixty West Giddings Street.
Great. And Linda, can you also do the same and please state your name and business address for the record?
Yes, Linda Konoski, twenty-one fourteen North Hoynes Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four seven.
Wonderful. And Chairman, do you want to swear them in at this time?
Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, so Ms. Eisenberg, can you, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And Ms. Konoski, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
And then Jennifer, if the the testimony that was provided, the affidavit that was provided to the board, if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent to the the material that was provided?
It would be, yes.
And then to Linda, the same for you, the testimony that you provided, the affidavit that was provided, if you were to testify today, would your testimony be the same accurate as to what was provided?
Yes, it would.
Wonderful. May I proceed, Chairman?
Yes, go right ahead, Counselor. Thanks.
Okay, so the hardship in this case is a triangular shape of the lot and the existing home that already encroaches onto the minimum rear yard and east side setbacks. Jennifer wishes to add a one story and a two story addition to the home to allow, you know, her family to expand. They have a baby boy, and they're just making space in their home to provide bigger living spaces. To allow for the two story addition, Jennifer is requesting a rear yard setback reduction and an east side setback reduction. And there are other properties in the vicinity that have built to the property lines, including twenty-nine ten West Giddings, twenty-nine eleven West Giddings. And there are other properties on this side of the street that are triangular in shape that also have been subject to variations such as twenty fifty-four West Giddings that due to the unique triangular configuration of the lot have asked for setback reductions to allow construction to be built. The applicant has engaged with her neighbors. She's been awesome, reaching out and being friendly and engaging in conversations to talk about the project. And we have not received any opposition. And the home that is to the east, the immediate adjacent home is vacant. But before the home was vacant, the property owners at that time were not in opposition to this project at all. If there are any questions, we're happy to answer.
Great. Any questions from the board? You know, this lot is clearly irregular. We don't have to question too much on on that. But if there's no questions from the board, I'll give one final opportunity. We'll take this under consideration. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the weekend. Okay, next up, we're going to call calendar number one ninety-four dash twenty-one dash Z. And Himena, I believe this is your firm again.
Correct. So I'm still sworn in and everything, right?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so I believe for this call, the applicant Maricela Silva and Thomas Montgomery should be present. I just want to confirm that they're they're present on the call.
I am here. Thomas Montgomery is here.
Wonderful. Hi, Tom.
Hi.
Is Maricela, are you on the call?
I don't see Maricela. There is one phone number. I allowed them to talk, but other than that, I don't see.
Okay.
I don't know. If it's Maricela, she needs to unmute.
Yes.
Or raise her hand virtually in Zoom if she's logged in in a different name.
It might be under Teresa, who is the other homeowner.
We got, we got her now.
Wonderful, wonderful. Okay. Okay, so I will just go ahead and start then, if that's okay with Chairman. Okay, so again, for the record, my name is Imena Castro. I'm a zoning attorney at Acosta Esger and one of the attorneys for the matter before you today. On the call, as we just verified, is the applicant and homeowner, one of the homeowners, Maricela Silva and project architect, Thomas Montgomery. Maricela, can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Now, let's see, Maricela, I know your hand is raised. It might just be muted. Come, do you remember how you unmute if she's on a phone?
No, she's not on the phone, but her, she's unmuted also.
So while she goes, goes ahead and figures that out, Tom, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
Sure, my name is Thomas Montgomery. My address is seventeen oh one West Eighteenth Place.
Wonderful. So Chairman, how would you like to handle this? Would you like me to just continue and then Maricela would just jump on the call?
Yeah, let's, Maricela, can we still not hear you? Himena, let's go to your next matter and circle back on this, because I don't want to get into this if we can't hear her.
Wonderful. Okay, so Rolando will take over the next case.
Yes. Perfect. And those cases are calendar numbers one ninety-five dash twenty-one dash Z and one ninety-six dash twenty-one dash Z at nineteen fourteen dash twenty-four North Kenmore.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Rolando Acosta, again, here on behalf of the applicant. I have with me here Mr. Robert Weisberg, who is the owner of the property, along with his wife Marie, and the architect for the project, Mr. Lawrence Booth. I am hoping that both Bob and Larry are here. Just please let us know so that we can confirm that we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Larry. Thank you. Bob? I'm texting him. In the meantime, Larry, can you give us your name and address for the record?
Lawrence Booth, Booth Hansen Architect, three 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 South Desplines, Chicago.
You are the architect of record for this project?
That's correct.
Great. And thanks. And Mr. Booth, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Weisberg has texted me that he is on, but he has not been upgraded.
Great. Let's try to find him. Could he be, he's probably RW Ventures, come on. Awesome. Thank you.
Bob, are you on now? Please unmute if you are.
Yes, my apologies. Did it show up as RW Ventures, and I'm glad to be here. Thank you all.
Will you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Robert Weisberg, eighteen forty-three North Dayton, Chicago, six oh six one four.
Great, thanks, Mr. Weisberg. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So starting with Mr. Weisberg, Bob, we, an affidavit was prepared that you executed summarizing your testimony for today's proceedings. And if you were to testify, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Larry, you are the architect for the project. Similarly, an affidavit was prepared that you executed. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Mr. Chairman, this matter involves another triangular lot at the end of Kenmore Street. It is currently improved with a single family home. The applicant wishes to demolish most of this home. They will be retaining the rear wall, which is seen now on the screen, as well as the north wall, and then constructing a new home on the property. Because of the awkward shape of this property, a series of variations are requested. The rear yard setback variation really precipitated by the existence of the rear wall. A north side setback variation, that one's precipitated by the existence of the north wall of the property. And then a front yard variation that is really required because there's an existing concrete fence along the front of the wall that is being modified. And the modification has triggered the variation to a zero lot line. The actual home itself will be set back approximately nine and a half feet, as you can see here, from the front property line. So the zero setback is really related to the wall. It is a two story home that is being proposed because with a unique configuration, trying to accommodate the unique shape of this particular lot. There's also a variation requested from the rear yard setback, given that the home and the existing rear walls are fully within the rear setback. There is no opportunity to provide any open space in the rear setback, although open space will be provided along the front of the home. We have reached out to the immediate neighbor to the north, the Schindlers. They are supportive of the application. They were quite involved. There was a prior variation request for this property, and they were very concerned about it and very involved. They don't have any of those concerns with the proposed structure, mainly because it is a smaller footprint as well as one floor shorter than the prior proposal. We've also had a meeting with the Ranch Triangle Association for the community. They are also supportive and met with the alderman who is supportive. Actually, the alderman's letter of support summarizes the support of our neighbors as well as the ranch triangle. The Weisberg's hope to make this their personal home. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would open it up for questions of the board.
Great. And just for, just for a kind of small clarification, how is the front fence being modified?
The center of the front fence currently has a metal gate that allows access to the property. That is being changed from metal to a wood slatted angled slats along the front, which the Mr. Weisberg, as well as well as Mr. Booth, believe it fits better aesthetically with the property. Because of the lack of transparency of the wood slats compared to the metal, that has triggered the variation. I will note that there's across, immediately across the street, there's another property that has a similar fence with the wood slats along the Kenmore property line. You can see it right here on this photo. It's missing the door because obviously there would be a gate in the middle of that wood fence.
So is the height changing at all from the existing fence?
No, no. And it's within required height, so there's, it's not any taller. It's not any closer to the property line. It's just a matter of literally changing it from a metal ornamental metal fence or front to a wood slide fence.
Got it. Great. And Counselor, do you want to get the architect on in anyway?
Well, sure, happy, happy to have him testify as to the difficulties. Larry, if you had to build a home here with meeting the setbacks requirements, what difficulties would that present?
Well, there's a rear yard requirement that would, and with a front yard and a rear yard requirement, you end up with a, as someone described it, a bowling alley. You get a sliver, and because of the existing walls, which have been there a number of years, we decided for a number of reasons, there's no reason to change or take those down. So this was, started out as a minor, a minor renovation and turned into more more than, the existing house there is very complicated design wise and very idiosyncratic, has a lot of ups and downs, and it's very awkward looking. I guess it was a period piece in the fifties or sixties that somebody had a vision. But it, it really has no continuity to it. So this is what, over a six month period of designing with the Weisberg's, this is what has, what has developed, and we're very positive about the design. We think it fits the neighborhood and and will be landscaped appropriately so that it fits into the neighborhood, much like the site does has.
How unique to you is it to have to design a home in a triangular lot?
Well, I think I said to you the other day that this is the first time in all my, my practice that in Chicago, we had a triangular lot. We've had trapezoidal and and sort of half triangles, but this is a perfect triangle, which makes it exciting to me, actually.
If today's a pattern, Rolando finds those triangles.
Yeah, right. He's the triangle man.
It's a, it's a new niche practice.
Exactly right, Chairman.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Booth. Do we have any questions from the board?
Yes, this is Joanne. So I have a question for the architect. Can you speak a bit more? You said there are several reasons for keeping the two walls that you are keeping. Can you get into that a little bit more?
Well, I think overarching it is today's sustainability. We didn't want to tear down as any more than we had to here to end up in some landfill. We want to preserve, and I think this goes in any project and anywhere in the city. We want to preserve as much as we can the existing conditions because of the sustainable approach. And we want to reduce the requirements for landfill, and we want to reduce the cost of creating a whole new brick wall. Not just the money cost, but the environmental cost, because there's a, when you, when you make brick, you create a carbon footprint.
And you may have addressed it, but I guess on the flip side of that, given the sustainability argument, why demolish the rest of the building?
Well, the rest of the building. Well, the rest of the building, actually, the part that got demolished was just the front, the front of the triangle. And it just was, it was unworkable. It was really weird. You walked in the front door and right into the kitchen.
Can I just add that the developer who had bought the property before us had, for various reasons, sat in it for a couple of years and a hole had developed and he'd let water run into it. So a lot of it was literally rotted out.
And I would add as a last point that also it preserved existing conditions with our neighbors, which we thought was important to just not alter their current, their current home or the adjacency to their current home.
And, and we worked with them to save a row of trees on the northwest, northeast corner there, the upper right-hand corner triangle, which protected their house from street traffic.
Questions from the board? All right. Thank you, everyone, for your time today, and we'll take these two calendar numbers under consideration.
Have we got that done?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'm leaving unless you want to watch the next one.
All right, let's circle back. Hymena, do we have, I, I know we have Maricela. I see her as a panelist. Let's check her sound. Maricela, are you present?
So you see her?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Great, perfect. Okay, go ahead, counselor.
All right. Sorry for that technical glitch. So again, for the record, my name is Hymena Castro. I'm a zoning attorney for the matter before you today. On the call, thankfully, is applicant and homeowner, one of the homeowners, Maricela Silva, and the project architect, Thomas Montgomery. Maricela, at last, can you please state your name and your address for the record?
Yes, Maricela Silva, twenty-four, twenty-two, South Central Park, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two-three.
And then Tom, Thomas, can you please state your name?
Hymena, I'm going to quick swearing. I'm going to swear in Ms. Silva. So Ms. Silva, will you please, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, we do.
Thank you very much.
And then Thomas, again, just for the record, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
Sure, my name is Thomas Montgomery. My address is seventeen oh one West Eighteenth Place.
Thank you. And Maricela, I'm just gonna, Maricela.
I'm going to swear in Mr. Montgomery only because I can't remember if we got there last time. So Mr. Montgomery, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, yes.
And then Maricela, if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent to the affidavit that we provided the board?
Yeah.
And Thomas, the same for you. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the affidavit that we provided to the board?
Yes.
Okay. Chairman, would you like me to continue?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you, Hymena.
Okay, so the hardship in this case is the existing home that encroaches onto the side setbacks and the existing enclosed porch at the rear that was built with no permits. Maricela wants to rebuild a porch with brick at the same location as the existing porch, which you can see on the screen. And the porch will generally follow the existing wall lines, which would necessitate the side setback reductions. We do have a letter of support, approximately four letters of support from the neighbors to the north, the immediate home to the north. And even that home, you know, the rear, the, the rear portion of their home extends way further out than the Maricela's home. And we do have support from the neighbors to the south. But due to language barriers, they didn't feel comfortable signing any sort of letters to present to the board. But we do have their support as well.
Okay, and, and quick question that comes to mind to clarify. So the back porch that was built without permits, did Ms. Silva build that porch?
She did not. So they are relatively new homeowners. And as part of their, you know, taking over the home and, and making it beautiful, she and Teresa, the other homeowner, are looking to do renovations at the home. And one of them is rebuilding the porch, which was there before they purchased it.
Got it. So a good amount of this is, is putting, it's legal non-conforming and, and then adjusting in relation to that. Okay. Any questions from the board? All right, Ms. Silva and counselor, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you very much, and, and I appreciate your patience with the technical issues. Thank you.
Of course, we have them on our end too. So don't worry, counselor.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take one more calendar number and then we're going to take a little break. Making great pace, knock on wood. So next up, calendar number one ninety-seven dash twenty-one dash Z and one ninety-eight dash twenty-one dash Z. And this is at thirty-three twenty-nine North Seeley Avenue. So I believe we have Fred Augustine as counselor here. So Fred, whenever you're ready, let us know.
Okay, um, just want to make sure the applicants are on and the architect, Robin Donner and Emily Churchma.
I'm here. Emily's here.
Okay, is Rob in there?
I'm here.
Okay, great. So thanks, Mr. Chairman, for the record.
All right, counselor.
Sure. For the record, my name is Freddie Augustin. I'm the attorney on this matter. Here, I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Robin Donner and Jeff Pratt. Just, I want to give a little background about this matter to the board. So the applicants own the property at thirty-three twenty-nine North Seeley. It's approved with a two-and-a-half-story, single-family residence. The applicants and the family reside at this home. They've, they acquired it back in two thousand and eleven, and since that time, they have put substantial work into the home. You know, they do have a big family. They have four boys. So obviously, the goal for the home was to make it livable for four boys. And part of that goal was to also have an active rear yard. And the intent in the backyard was to have as much open space as in the backyard. So a new rear deck as well as a new garage rooftop deck over the garage. So, you know, and also want to point out, one of their sons is enrolled in an individualized education program, IEP. So as part of his curriculum, he needs physical continuous exercise. So the way the applicants accomplish that is they have a trampoline set up in the rear yard. So that kind of fulfills that. So incorporating a trampoline, getting as much open space in the backyard, those are the elements they wanted. You know, they were about to move forward with that. The problem is they got overwhelmed with the approval process and what needed to get done. So they scaled back the project and just got a permit for a deck and a garage. So in February twenty-twenty, they got a permit for that. So in February twenty-twenty, they began construction of the garage in the rear deck. And then COVID-nineteen hit. And as you know, COVID-nineteen, the pandemic affected all our lives. Their children had to be attending school remotely as a result, and their goal was they did not want to leave the property that, because it was not safe. So in order for them to essentially stay home and enjoy the outdoors still, they did proceed to also build a garage rooftop deck in the rear deck. Unfortunately, those aspects are not covered in the building permit. So the applicants were never cited. Realized it was wrong to build those structures without a permit. So they're here today for a variation seeking relief to the side setback, rear setback and rear yard open space in order for them to get a permit for these structures. So here with me this morning, I have the applicants, Robin Donner and Jeff Pratt, as well as our project architect, Emily Churchma. So Ms. Donner will be my first witness.
Okay, great. Yeah, Ms. Donner, can you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Robin Donner. I live at thirty-three twenty-nine North Seeley Avenue, Chicago.
Do, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Ms. Donner, you co-owned the property at thirty-three twenty-nine North Seeley, is that correct?
That is correct.
And it's currently approved with a two-and-a-half-story, single-family residence?
Yes.
And you purchased that back in two thousand and eleven, correct?
Correct.
Hey, sorry to interrupt. If you're not speaking, can you mute? We're hearing some conversations in the background. Great, thank you.
And your intent, obviously, for your family was to be in Roscoeville neighborhood and raise your family there, is that correct?
Correct.
And as I established before, you do have four boys, is that right?
Yeah.
So when you bought this property, the goal was to obviously update it in order to have your big family live in it, correct?
Correct.
So you did substantial renovations to it since you bought it, is that right?
Right.
So part of your goal was to have essentially what you call an active backyard, is that correct?
Correct.
As well as a new garage that would fit two cars. And within the garage, you needed a two-car garage, so you can incorporate a lot of storage space, is that right?
Six bikes, yes.
You also needed a, a trampoline located in the rear yard, is that right?
Right.
And again, as I alluded to, one of your sons is enrolled in an IEP, is that right?
That's correct.
And that, you know, the trampoline provides regular physical exercise for him, is that right?
And his occupational therapist uses it as well, so yes.
And really, the only place to incorporate that trampoline is within the rear yard behind the house and between the house and the garage, is that right?
Yes.
So in order to get more open space, you wanted a new rear deck as a garage, as well as a garage rooftop deck, is that right?
Right.
So you and your architect actually designed this rear yard. But you got overwhelmed essentially what was involved in getting it approved, is that correct?
Right.
And a lot of it had to do with the fact that you just went through a substantial rehab of your home, is that right?
Yeah, yes.
So at the time, you decided you just want to scale it back and just build a new two-car garage as well as build a new rear deck, is that right?
Right.
And you began that construction back in February twenty-twenty?
Correct.
But obviously, the COVID-nineteen pandemic kind of changed everything for you, is that right?
Yes.
So you and your husband decided it was important now to do the garage rooftop deck as well as a stairway access to the deck, is that right?
Right.
So you went ahead and built them?
Yes.
And unfortunately, those improvements were not included in your permit, is that right?
Correct.
After you and your husband completed the work, you realized it wasn't right to do this work without a permit, is that right?
Right.
And to be clear, you were never cited by the city for this work?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, so you're here just to, you want to lawfully do the right thing and lawfully establish these structures?
Correct.
Many improvements on your block have garage rooftop decks, is that right?
Oh, yes, all of them.
So basically, what you built is in character with the neighborhood, is that right?
Yes.
You work with your neighbor immediately north of your property on this deck, stairway access and the variations we're seeking, is that right?
Correct.
And your neighbor is in approval and in support, is that correct?
Yes, they are.
And to be clear, your neighbor immediately south of you is a multi-unit rental building, correct?
Right.
And then the owner of that building does not live there, is that right?
Correct.
Further, you're very involved in your neighborhood, especially on your block, is that right?
Correct, yes.
And as of now, you have not heard any negative feedback from your neighbors about your improvements or this variation, is that right?
No, none at all.
Okay. You also work with Alderman Waggis Pack's office on this matter?
Yes.
And he has no objection to the variation you're seeking, is that right?
Correct.
Since you purchased the property in two thousand and eleven, you, the amount of work you put into it is around eight hundred and ninety thousand, is that right?
Yes.
And this amount includes the work you did in the backyard, is that correct?
Correct.
And I want to be clear, you and your husband are not real estate developers, is that right?
No, we're not.
You're not seeking to sell your home anytime soon, is that right?
No.
So the work you put into your home and your backyard were investments for your family's future at this property, is that correct?
Yes.
So on your behalf, our office submitted an affidavit you executed? Is that correct?
Yes.
And if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with the facts in your affidavit, is that correct?
Oh, yes.
All right, thank you. I'd like to go to our architect, Emily Churchma.
Good morning.
Good morning. Ms. Churchma, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Emily Churchma. I'm an architect at Two Point Perspective, and our address is eleven thirty-seven West Webster in Chicago, six oh six one four.
And you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes, I am a licensed architect.
Great. And Ms., do you, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thanks.
And Mr. Chairman, if we could recognize her as an expert witness in architecture as well, so.
Yes. This is variation, yeah.
Ms. Churchma, you're familiar with the property as well as the applicant's family, is that right?
I am.
And you helped design the renovation of their home back in two thousand and sixteen, is that clear?
Yes, I did.
So based on your experience, the applicants have a big and active family, would you agree?
They do.
So in addition to the rehab of their home, the applicants wanted a active rear yard that fit the needs of their families, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
So you actually designed a rear yard that included a sizable two-car garage with a rooftop deck and a rear deck, is that right?
Yep.
But the applicants did decide to scale back that project and just do a two-car garage in the rear deck, isn't that right?
Yeah.
And a lot of it had to do with the fact that, again, they just went through a substantial rehab of their home, is that right?
Correct.
So you obtained a permit for the garage and rear deck, and by then, your involvement in the project ended, correct?
That is correct.
All right. So as you know, the applicant's goals changed and they proceeded to went ahead and built the garage rooftop deck as well as that stairway access, is that right?
Right.
And you were essentially rehired to establish those structures, is that right?
Yes.
You agree that the property is unique in that it has, it has an existing billing that's ninety-two years and it's shorter than standard city lot, is that right?
Yeah.
So given these unique circumstances and the way the garage deck and the stairway access were built, this was the only way to incorporate these improvements within the rear garden, is that right?
Right.
All right, the existing home is already set back zero to one feet from its outside property line, is that right?
That's correct.
And then the rear deck and stairway access are aligned with that existing home, is that right?
They are.
All right. Given the applicant's big family, again, they needed a sizable two-car garage, is that right?
That's right.
And as required, the garage needed a three-foot clearance from the garage to the north side property line, is that right?
Yes, since we didn't have it at the, the house.
Okay, so, and to be clear, you're not permitted to have a stairway access with.
I'm sorry, you, you cut out there.
So, so in that three-foot clearance, you can't have that stairway access to the garage rooftop deck, is that right?
Right, there would be a conflict.
So the only place you could put it is in the rear yard, isn't that right?
Yes.
But as I alluded to, because one of his, one of the applicants' boys needs, needs a trampoline for his IEP, that area in the rear yard is occupied by the trampoline, is that right?
Correct.
So the only really place to put the stairway access was along this outside property line, is that right?
Yes.
So moreover, given the trampoline and size of the existing home, it would have been difficult to have the stairway access that great, isn't that right?
Yes, it would be a challenge.
So as a result, it was more efficient to have the stairway access connect to the rear deck of your home, is that right?
Absolutely.
So had the app, had the property been a standard city lot, and let's just say the applicants decided to tear down the home instead of keeping it, you could have theoretically designed a new home that incorporated all these elements in the rear yard without seeking any release, isn't that right?
Yes.
So, but for the existing home and the short lot, there is not much flexibility there, isn't that right?
Correct, yeah.
On your behalf, my office did submit an affidavit that you executed. Is that right?
Yeah.
All right, and if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with the facts presented in your affidavit, is that right?
It would, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have no more further questions for these witnesses. I believe you should have a letter of support from the alderman's office. I think he sent something over. Otherwise, we're here to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and just. Okay, thank you. Yeah, and just so everyone knows, if my camera goes off, I'm listening. It's just I'm, I'm having some Wi-Fi things that I'm fixing. So, any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Who constructed this?
Are you asking for the contractor?
Yes.
I, I know his name, Robin, do you want to speak to that?
Who constructed the stairs and all of that? Hitch? Hitch Concepts, thank you, sorry.
And under whose supervision?
It was under the, so this particular contractor does a lot of rear porches and rooftop decks and everything, so he, he handled the entire construction process. And we were not hired to act as the owner's advocate in, in this project.
And when was this designed?
We started this rear deck design in 2017, and it just kind of morphed, and we, we actually submitted for the permit, for the, the first permit, which just was the garage and the rear deck that we had scaled back. That was in 2019.
But this was designed then?
The original design was submitted in 2019, then it was built in 2020, and then this, the images that you're looking at here is the new permit submittal for the retroactive permit that I was rehired to get a permit for what was actually constructed.
And why was, why was this done without a permit?
The garage and the majority of the rear deck, not the, the roof deck, but the rear deck, was constructed based on, on the permitted drawings that were originally granted. The rest of it, that was kind of installed later, kind of speaking to what Fred and Robin had kind of said, just kind of came from that in the spring while it was under construction.
I guess this is Jolene Saul. I guess can the owner answer that question, and then I have a couple more?
Right, we, so we built the garage and built the deck off of the house. And that was done, they finished everything early, early March when COVID was starting to hit. And then that is when we made the decision to ask them to build us stairs up to that deck and give us a deck, so we would have more space.
Okay, but you were aware that it wasn't permitted?
Oh, absolutely. We're the ones that turned ourselves in.
Okay, then I have a couple more questions. I believe I read in your materials that the trampoline was, is built in. I just was curious, there was, do we have any pictures of that condition? Because it seems like that's part of your argument as to why you need the variation.
I don't know if there are any photos of it. Oh, right there, you can see it. It's in ground.
I can't. I can't.
It is, it's built into the ground for safety purposes, so that when my son is using it, he isn't flying out of something, and then we have padding that we put down when we need to.
Yeah, I just, from that, I can't, I can't, I can't fully, I can't fully see the conditions. And then do your, I know you said that your other neighbors on the block have rooftop, I mean garage.
Yeah.
But do they also have the connector?
Yes. Actually.
All, all of them, or?
Not all of them. One of them to the south, actually, they don't even have a yard. They just have a full family room underneath and a whole back porch that goes from the top of the garage over to their house. And then another one, they have the attachment, and then like a garden instead of a trampoline down in the area.
Yeah, I just have to say, it's hard for me to understand the need for the variation without having a picture of the condition that is partially driving it.
I don't, I don't know if I sent. I don't know how to get you a picture better than that one. I'm happy to send one over if you'd like. I can go and take a picture of it at a different angle, so it's a little easier to see. But it does take up the...
Don't worry about that. Unfortunately, it's too late for us to put that on the record. Okay, other questions from the board?
Well, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this clearly. So when you, when you built the the deck, you, you knew that you need the permits, that you needed the permits, you went ahead and did it anyway, and now you're asking for basically forgiveness?
Yes, you're right.
And I think, this is from, originally, they didn't want to do the deck. I mean, they, they held off on doing the deck on the garage and the stairway access, but I think, you know, with COVID-19 hit, I think, you know, they wanted to stay home. And, you know, so in order to just be outdoors and do all that stuff, they decided proceeded to build it. So I don't think if COVID-19 hit, I don't think they would have done this work. Right, Robin?
Right. We would have put that off and then gone through the whole variance for it. But the garage was already ready for a rooftop deck. We wanted it eventually, but we were just going to hold off and wait and do it step by step. But then when COVID hit, it was a bit of a panic, and we threw, we asked them to please do it, put it up there, so that we could utilize it and have that space.
And I'm interested, did, did the contractor builder, which I think we have on the record as being named Hitch Concepts?
Pitch with a P?
Pitch Concepts. Did they give you fair warning that this is something, you know, I, I know you said that they do these often, any builder, architect in the city knows that these connectors are controversial. Did they give you fair warning that this is, you know, we're doing something illegal here?
Right, and he did. He, he told us that, you know, that he knew it wasn't up to code. Definitely, it's not his fault. We asked for him to do it.
Okay. Interesting conversation that they were still, you know, willing to do it, but, you know, I appreciate the honesty. So this, you know, and this is a tricky one for us. Anyone who's watched the board knows that even when we see a connector that hasn't been built, we view them with suspicion for history of them being viewed with suspicion and legislation coming out on the topic. So on that, and I do appreciate the transparency here, on that, do we have any additional questions from the board? Okay, we're going to take this one under consideration, and thank you, everyone, for your time and responses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to take a 15-minute recess now. That will get us back at 11:10 a.m. Central Standard Time. Commissioner Toya seconds this motion. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Great. So again, we'll reconvene at 11:10 a.m. Central Standard Time. Thank you, everyone.
Chairman, this is Kamal, just to let you know, Alderman Nick Esposito is under paneling this talk.
Great, okay, perfect. I think he should be on the next one, so that's great. Thank you. All right.
All right, I moved to reconvene this May 21st, 2021, meeting of the zoning board of appeal. Commissioner Twaya Seconds, Commissioner Fola?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, we are back. We'll move right along to calendar number 199-21-S. And quick reminder, if you just mute yourself, we're getting some feedback, so if you're not talking. While everyone's getting situated, I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation on this special use. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a one-lane drive-through to serve a proposed one-story Starbucks restaurant, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Starbucks Corporation, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site and landscape plans dated May 19th, 2021, prepared by Wupper Architecture Engineering Geospatial, and floor plans and elevations dated April 22nd, 2021, prepared by Detroit Architectural Group. With that, I know we have Alderman Spisato present on this one, so Alderman, if you're here, feel free to just let me know if you want to say something upfront during the end, or how you want to do it.
Well, yeah, I could say something. I just want to make sure it's understood that I'm in full support of this. It's been a vacant ice r for a couple of years now. There hasn't been many takers other than a car wash, which the community rejected, and the community says they want a restaurant, so I consider Starbucks a restaurant and a great anchor to the community. So, yeah, this project has my full support.
Great, thank you. Thank you then, Alderman, for coming. We appreciate you for coming. All right, great. So councillor, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Alderman Spisato. My name is Talar Bavarian for the record. Law offices of Thompson Coburn at 55 East Monroe in Chicago. With me this morning are quite a few people. I believe they are all on, first of which is Tom Hanahan, who is the store development manager with Starbucks Corporation, the applicant. We also have the project architect designing the building, as well as a civil engineer who did the site development. Jacob Root is the project architect, I'm sorry I didn't mention his name, John Greva, the civil engineer. We also have a traffic engineer, Steve Porcorin, who prepared a traffic report, which we submitted with our findings effect, as well as our appraiser, Peter Pulos, whose report is also among the materials we submitted to the board. Mr. Chairman, would you like to swear in the witnesses now?
Yeah, that'd be great. And since there are so many of them, maybe councillor, if it's okay with you, I just go down the line?
Sure.
Perfect. All right. First up, Mr. Hanahan, can you please state your name and address?
Yeah, Tom Hanahan, 1338 Holbrook Lane, Batavia, Illinois, 60510.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, John, and sorry if I say any last name wrong, but Gerswah?
Greva.
Greva, sorry, I said it way wrong.
That's okay.
You could state your name and address, please?
Sure, Jonathan Greva, 1815 South Myers Road, Suite 950, Oak Brook Terrace, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Steve Porcorin, if you could state your name and address, please?
Stephen Porcorin, 145 Commerce Drive, Braith Lake, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. We have Peter Pulos sworn in and recognized from an earlier matter. So then Jacob Root, Jacob Root, if you could state your name and address?
Jacob Root, corporate address, 1644 Ford Avenue, Wyandotte, Michigan, 48192.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. And then councillor, we have one person on my list in support, Mr. Ed Bannon. Should I swear, Mr. Bannon, in as well? Great. Mr. Bannon, if you're there, please state your name and address?
Ed Bannon, 3700 North Oriole, Chicago 60634.
Perfect. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. So councillor, I'll let you take it from here, and then I'll end, before we do final board questions, I'll end with Mr. Bannon, who signed up in support.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to keep our testimony brief here, but I'll just say, you know, on an introductory basis, that this project, we submitted this in September of last year, and we have worked very closely with the department to make sure that the site is compliant with code, with, we worked with the neighborhood planner for this neighborhood as well, to make sure that it was, you know, designed in accordance with the, you know, larger planning purpose for the neighborhood, as well as having worked with the alderman on making sure that we have community support with the project, for the project. So with that, I will go to Mr. Hanahan. Tom, are you there?
I am.
Thank you. And I'm not going to ask you a lot of questions. I'll leave those to the board, but if you were to continue testifying this morning, can you confirm that your testimony would be consistent with the materials we submitted to the board, including your affidavit?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. And then I will move on to Jacob Root, who was architect for the building design. Hi there, Jacob. If you were to continue, oh, you're a licensed architect, correct?
Correct, in the state of Michigan.
And you designed this building in consultation with the zoning ordinance and the building code as it applies in Illinois and Chicago?
That is correct.
Thank you. And if you were to continue testifying this morning, your testimony would be consistent with the material we submitted on your behalf, including your affidavit?
That is correct.
Thank you. And then we'll go ahead with, to John Greva, the civil engineer. John, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Thanks, John. John, you're licensed in the state of Illinois, correct?
Yes, yes, I am.
Thank you. And with, throughout our extensive revisions of the site design with the department, you have been heavily involved in redesigning the site as, in accordance with the comments we received from staff. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And if you were to continue, or your affidavit was pretty bareboat, but John has, John, you were the primary site design specialist on this project, correct?
Correct. I am the licensed professional engineer. The site plan was prepared under my responsible charge.
Perfect. And if you were to continue testifying, your testimony would reflect all of the materials that we submitted in connection with this application?
That's correct.
Thank you. Then I'll go ahead to Steve, our traffic engineer, Mr. Porcorin?
Yes.
Mr. Porcorin, if you were to continue test, or you're a licensed engineer in the state of Illinois, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. And if you were to continue testifying this morning, your testimony would be consistent with the report we submitted in connection with this application?
That is correct.
Thank you. And finally, Peter, Mr. Pulos, you are a licensed MIA appraisal appraiser in the state of Illinois, and the chairman already confirmed that you're recognized by the board? And if you were to continue testifying this morning, your testimony would be consistent with the materials we submitted, including your report?
That's correct.
Perfect. Mr. Chairman, if there are any questions, when the board would be happy to answer those specific questions.
No, councillor, if it's okay with you, maybe we get support on the record and then circle back?
Certainly.
I'm realizing I forgot, and apologies, Ms. Deborah Katz is on in support as well. So maybe, Ms. Katz, if you're on, if you could state your name and address?
Deborah Katz, I live at 3630 North Harlem, 506 Chicago.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, thank you.
Great. So what brings you here today in support?
I live directly across the street from the site, and as the alderman had stated, they had initially thought a car wash is going to go in the location. We are thrilled that a Starbucks is going in instead. I believe people in our area are excited about the idea, and they certainly want to know more. There's no information out on the sign, but I believe that they will also be in favor of that over a car wash any day. I think that the entry and exit on Harlem is a good plan rather than on Wayland, and the fact that there's just one business at that location rather than two is also a better choice. So I look forward to hearing that this has been approved. So I appreciate it. I am in favor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Katz, and thank you for coming today. We appreciate it. So other support, Mr. Ed Bannon?
Oh, yeah, I echo Ms. Katz's comments. I think Starbucks deserves credit for not using the side street of Wayland as an exit for the drive-through. I think that's better for the residential area. The tables set up along Harlem should act like the sidewalk, which is great. And it seems like the site plan has enough room for the car stacking, so it doesn't back up on Harlem Avenue. So overall, this is a good plan for the neighborhood, and I hope you support it.
Thank you to you as well for taking the time to come today. So councillor, unless you have anything to add right now, I'll circle the board for questions.
I do actually have one, one thing to add. I noticed that in the agenda, the building area is noted as 2,150 square feet. The revised plan actually shows a 2,280-square-foot restaurant. We provided notice to the neighborhood reflecting that enlarged building, and we actually received a revised denial from the department as well. I just think it did make it onto the agenda.
Got it. Yeah, thank you. And we will amend that on the record. So again, this is calendar number 199-21-S, and the amendment to the agenda will now read 2,280 square feet.
That's correct.
Great, perfect. Questions from the board? Great. Thank you, everyone. We're going to take this under consideration. Appreciate everyone coming out today.
Thank you all. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Happy weekend, everyone.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we're going to call calendar number 201-21-S. And when the councillor's getting situated, I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed Body Arc Service Tattoo Facility. So Kevin Corbin, whenever you're present, let us know.
We're here.
Oh, is that, so I see Daniel and Bailey him as, perfect. And now I see, councillor, can you, are you able to speak? You might be on mute.
Chairman, it seems like Mr. Kevin joined without a microphone or audio.
Okay, it looks like he's trying again. We'll give him a second.
Okay, there it is. There's audio here.
Councillor, I see you're on mute. Promising step. We still can't hear you. We'll get it sorted out. Don't worry. You know, councillor, maybe what we do, and if you just nod, if you, if we just go to the next matter and we circle right back so that you can sign in and sign out, it's probably just a microphone issue. Bailey and Daniel, is that okay with you?
Sure.
That's fine.
We'll circle right back.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor, just do the whole reboot thing. All right, great. Thank you, everyone. So we're going to move now to calendar number 204-21-S. And I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a one-lane drive-through to serve a proposed Dunkin' Donuts restaurant, provided, number one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Reyna Avenue OLLC. Number two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated May 12th, 2021, with site and landscape plans dated May 18th, 2021, prepared by Nick Scarlatus and Associates. And number three, right-turn-only signs are posted at the exits to Avenue O. And there's, I see Nick on. Nick, can you, there we go. So how we're going to do this, because we do, we have an objector on this matter, we're going to start with the applicant's face and sheet. We'll hear from the councillor and go through the witnesses, and the board will ask any questions simultaneously. Then we'll go to the objector. The objector can state their objection in line with our standards. The applicant can ask questions of the objector. We'll return to the applicant for a very quick closing, and then find questions from the board, and we'll carry on. So with that, I also see that there's some older people on, which is great. Let me make sure I have you signed in.
Yes, Tim, this is Alderwoman Garza. I'm here.
Oh, perfect. Okay, hi, Alderwoman Garza. Great. Do you want to speak at the beginning of this, or at the end?
I can wait till the end. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, thank you very much. Great. So just to confirm, do we have Elise Padilla on, who is the objector? You know, I'll ask you again when we get to that point. I don't fear right now, but, you know, this Zoom reality, it takes a second to log in. So with that, councillor, you can carry on with your face and sheet.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the law offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of Rainia, O, Avenue OLLC. The applicant has a contract to purchase the subject property located at 11701 South Avenue O. The site currently contains about 1,500, I'm sorry, 15,625 square feet of total lot area, and it's currently improved with effectively surface parking. The subject lot is actually an outlot for the larger shopping mall that abuts it to the south and east sides. The applicant is proposing to develop the outlot with a new one-story Dunkin' Donuts restaurant. The plans call for the installation of code-compliant land The, uh, plans call for the installation of code compliant landscaping and fencing, sixteen onsite parking spaces and a single drive-through lane. In order to permit the drive-through lane, the applicant is seeking a special use because the subject property is located in a C one zoning district. I have three witnesses available to testify this morning on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Sanj Kattal, our project architect, Ms. Nicoletta Scarlatus, and our land planning consultant, Kareem Musawir. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask to call my first witness against Sanj Kattal.
Yep, great. Uh, Mr. Kattal, if you, um, are there, please state your name and address.
Sanjeev Kattal.
So, Mr. Mr. Kattal, in that word, I know you have someone there with you. They can feel free to, um, to speak on your behalf, um, to see that we can, we can hear it.
Okay, so his name is Sanjeev Kattal. Address is five one six Gene Darfler Court in Naperville, Illinois, six oh five six five.
Perfect. And just so I know, um, what, what is your name?
Uh, Sweta Kattal. I'm his wife.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Kattal. And, you know, I'm gonna swear you in as well, um, just so that we have everything clear on the record. So first, Ms. Kattal, um, do you, do you have the same address as Mr. Kattal?
Yes.
And do you swear or affirm, um, to tell the truth in today's proceedings? And to the extent that it could be viewed as translating to translate in accurate form?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. And then if you could just address this question to Mr. Kattal, Mr. Kattal, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, uh, again, for the record, Sanj, you are the manager of the applicant, Rainia Avenue O L L C. Is that right?
Yes.
And as I, uh, indicated in my introduction, that entity has a contract to purchase the, uh, outlot at the subject property located again at eleven seven oh one South Avenue O. Is that right?
Correct.
And the plan is to develop the outlot with a new one-story restaurant building, uh, that'll operate as a Dunkin' Donuts, uh, restaurant, correct?
They'll have the Baskin Robbins too, but yes, correct.
And, uh, as I described in my introduction, the plan incorporates a single drive-through lane that would work in conjunction with the restaurant, correct?
Yes.
The drive-through lane is what brings us before the board today because the subject property is again located in a C one zoning district. Is that right?
Yes.
Um, and again, asking the question of Sanj, is it true that you have over twenty years of experience in, uh, operating fast food and quick service restaurants in the Chicagoland area?
Yes.
And, and Ms. Kattal, just so we have, um, we have this kind of like translationist process clear on the record. Um, Mr. Kattal, if you could just like nod, um, and, and like respond to your wife and then just so we know that you're understanding the question and if he's channeling it correctly.
Yes, no problem.
Thank you.
And again, uh, Sanj, uh, today you actually operate sixteen locations in the Chicagoland area that have this drive-through component. Is that right?
Yes.
So the drive-through lane has become a critical component of your business, right?
Yes.
And it's a feature you need in order to stay competitive in the marketplace. Is that fair?
Yes.
And Sanj, is it your understanding that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the written statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, Chairman, my next witness is, uh, going to be the project architect, Ms. Nicoletta Scarlatus.
Great. Ms. Scarlatus, if you're on, please state your name and address.
Ms. Karlatus, you're also on the phone. You have to press star six to unmute. There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Hello, this is, this is Nicoletta Scarlatus, five four oh five West one hundred and twenty-seventh Street, Crestwood, Illinois, six oh four one eight.
Great, thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, uh, Nick, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes, I am.
And you previously testified in the get, in that capacity before this board, is that right?
Yeah.
And you designed the program for the proposed restaurant and drive-through lane at the subject property?
Yeah.
And in terms of site access, there will be two curb cuts, uh, introduced along South Avenue O, which is actually located on the west side of the lot. Is that right?
Yeah.
And one additional access point will be provided from the, uh, common access drive located between our outlot and the shopping mall, uh, to the east. Is that right?
Yeah.
Uh, your plan also provides a one-way point of egress or exit for customers, uh, using the drive-through lane, correct?
Correct.
Chairman, that's shown for reference, uh, on the top right of the site plan. Uh, there's a, an exit lane in, in case somebody were to need to leave, uh, the, the drive-through lane. You know, either without making an order or after making an order.
Correct.
Um, and again, as, as I just stated, that, that'll function as more of a bypass lane in the event someone needs to leave the, the line, uh, for the drive-through.
Correct. There's no entry from that point. It's just, it's just an exit, as you said, as a bypass lane. Um, however, we have, um, a full access point south of that from the existing access drive for the Pete's Produce.
Um, and your plan also provides, uh, sixteen off-street parking spaces for customers wishing to park and, uh, actually go into the store. Is that right?
Correct.
And as part of your supplemental process, you've obtained preliminary C dot and landscape approval for this, uh, proposed site plan. Is that right?
Yeah.
And in fact, you made a number of, uh, significant changes to the plan in order to address concerns raised, uh, by both C dot and the department. Is that fair?
Yeah.
And still you believe the resulting design, the one that's being proposed to the board today, will function in a safe and efficient manner. Is that right?
Yeah.
And Nick, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yeah.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chairman, my last witness is Mr. Kareem Musawir. I think he's also participating by phone.
Okay, great. Yeah, we haven't, um, we haven't sworn Kareem in yet today. So Kareem, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Kareem Musawir. Address is two twenty-one North Vassal Street, Chicago.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, yes.
Great. And we, um, acknowledge your expertise based off of past appearance.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And Kareem, you are a land planning consultant by trade?
Yes, sir.
You've testified in that capacity many times before the board. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
And the scope of your assignment in this case was to determine whether the requested special use would comply with the general criteria for special uses as set forth in the code. Is that right?
Yes.
And you physically inspected the subject property in the surrounding area?
Yes, I did.
And you prepared a written zoning report summarizing your findings and conclusions. Is that right?
That's correct.
Generally speaking, though, it is your professional opinion that the proposed special use will meet all of the approval criteria, uh, as required by the ordinance. Is that right?
Yes.
And again, in this case, the proposal really is the development of a retailer commercial outlot that's part of a larger commercial development. Is that fair?
Yes.
And Kareem, is it your understanding that my office filed a, uh, copy of your written report to the zoning board of appeals?
Yes, sir.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with, again, the findings and conclusions contained in the written report?
Yes, it would.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. If you have any questions or you or the board members have any questions, uh, our team is available to answer them now.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. Before we move over, see the objectors present, um, any questions from the board? Okay, so I'd be interested if, if she is on to hear the objection. Is, um, Elise Padilla on? You know, I don't think we have, um, Elise Padilla signed on. Um, I'd like to, um, if she's okay with it, go to Alderwoman Garza then, um, and to make her statement, whether it's in support or opposition, um, Alderwoman, or does that sound good to you?
Yeah, Tim, that sounds great. Thank you so much. Um, I, I'm here today, um, to throw my full support behind this project. Um, our neighborhood is very excited. Um, we've received numerous calls after the letters went out. Um, we have a huge development that's going up across the street. Um, there's really nowhere you can get a cup of coffee and a donut, uh, you know, so this is, this is a great addition to this location and I'm in full support of it. Thank you.
Great. Yeah. Thank you, Alderwoman, for taking the time today to, um, come talk to us. We appreciate it. Okay. Any questions from the board? Because I don't believe, um, Elise Padilla is on. I'm gonna make one final confirm.
Uh, I don't see her, Chairman.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions from the board? All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming today and taking the time. We'll take this one under consideration.
Thank you, Chairman.
So now we're gonna circle back, um, to calendar number two oh one dash twenty-one dash S, which, as a reminder, the department's recommendation is on the record, so I won't read it again. Um, but let's see if we have the counselor's sound working. So Kevin, Kevin Coyne, when, um, when you're here, let's, uh, let's try to get you on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Great. That's relief. I'm so sorry about that, Chairman.
No, don't worry. It's unpredictable. Great. So, um, we've already read, I am sure you heard, we already read the department's planning, Department of Planning and Development's recommendation, so you can take from here.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, well, again, my name's Kevin Coyne. I'm an attorney with the law firm, Chiuak and Texan P C, which is located at thirty South Whacker Drive, Suite twenty-six hundred here on the Chicago Loop. I'm very excited, uh, to be here today on behalf of the applicant, Space Time Love L L C, with respect to their application for a special use to operate a body art service tat- tattoo establishment at the subject property located at nineteen fifty-three West Chicago Avenue here in Chicago. I have here today, hopefully we'll confirm, uh, my colleague Connor Valentine, who, uh, assisted in this project. We have the, uh, applicants, the applicant owners, uh, Daniel and Bailey Jimenez. And then we also have our expert witness, Joe Ryan of LaSalle Appraisal Group, also hopefully on the line. Um, Chairman, I only intend to call, uh, uh, Bailey and Joe Ryan. I don't know if you'd like to, um, swear them in now?
Yep, let's do so. Yes. So, um, Bailey, can you please get your name and address?
My name is Bailey Jimenez. Uh, the business address is nineteen fifty-three West Chicago Avenue, uh, six zero six two two.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, and then we'll get Joe Ryan's for in. So Joe, if you're there, um, we haven't seen you yet today. Can you please state your name and address?
Joseph M. Ryan, M A I, President, LaSalle Appraisal Group at the offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Point Avenue in Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, Chairman.
Great. And we recognize your expertise based off of plenty of past, past appearances. Counselor, go, go right ahead.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. Uh, a little bit about Space Time Love. Uh, they will be tenants of the subject property. They'll be leasing it. Um, Space Time Love is a new business, but its owner operators are very experienced in the arena of body art and tattoo services. They've worked for a number of years in Chicago at other established, um, at another established tattoo shop. In addition to the two owner operators, uh, Danny and Bailey, they also intend to hire one to two other, uh, tattoo artists to assist with their customer load. Uh, hours of operation, we're looking at noon to eight from Tuesday to Saturday, so the, uh, uh, operation will not be open into the late hours, so shouldn't be any issue with late night hours. Um, and very, very little traffic late. And then the, uh, customer load will also be fairly modest, expecting one to four customers per day, uh, coming to the shop for their tattoo work. Um, about the subject property, the property is zone B three-two. Uh, it's a two-story mixed-use commercial residential building. Uh, lot dimensions, twenty-four feet wide, hundred and twenty-two feet deep. Uh, Space Time Love will only operate, however, from the first floor of the subject building, uh, utilizing the retail storefront, uh, that, uh, uh, dimensions of that space is approximately, or not approximately, it's a, it is eleven, uh, one thousand one hundred and eighty, uh, square feet. The neighborhood itself is very well populated and vibrant and has a number of other mixed-use properties in all directions, and those properties include another tattoo body art service provider. Uh, the subject property is now vacant, so we would be filling vacant retail space in the city here. Uh, and with respect to the, uh, build-out, there really isn't going to be much of a build-out. There'll be no demolition. The space will be taken largely as it is, but we cannot lawfully operate despite the retail zoning without a special use. Uh, to address those special use standards, we will be in compliance with zoning should our special use be approved. There will be no adverse impact on neighboring properties. Again, this is a quiet operation, modest number of customers and employees come and go, and the operation does not stay open very late. Um, with respect to the operation being compatible with other surrounding buildings, um, the, uh, again, it's a mixed-use building. There's numerous other mixed-use operations in the immediate area. The operation is very compatible and similar to other, uh, building uses in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. And, uh, it will be compatible with the, uh, characteristics and, uh, with respect to lighting and noise and traffic. Again, we're not going to be generating any, any real traffic. Comparable uses exist, one to four customers per day and relatively early closing hours, so we're not going to have much by way of really any light at night that sometimes can cause problems for residential, uh, neighbors. We will promote pedestrian safety and comfort. We're closing early. There's not going to be any traffic impact, and we have lots of public transportation in the immediate area. We'll see T A trains and, uh, and, uh, bus services in the immediate vicinity of the subject site. Um, uh, to summarize, we are aware of no objections to our application. We did have a terrific meeting with Alderman Lasfatta, who, uh, just circulated a letter of support this morning. Uh, your staff should have that. And, uh, we would just again reiterate that tattoo services have become extremely popular and is a very growing industry, and we very much look forward to filling this vacant retail space and, uh, bringing the city of Chicago a new small business. I, I do have two witnesses, Chairman, and I would like to call, uh, at this time, the first being Bailey Jimenez.
Hey there.
Hi, Bailey. Uh, if you could state your full name and spell your last name for the record.
Bailey Jimenez, J I M E N E Z.
Great. And what is your, what is your address?
Uh, for the business, it is nineteen fifty-three West Chicago Avenue, uh, six zero six two two.
Great. And your personal address?
Twenty-three twenty West Huron Street, six zero six one two.
Okay. And you will be one of the owners of the applicant's space time love?
Yes, yep, Danny and I.
And you, you recall that we gave you an affidavit, uh, as part of your supplemental to the city of Chicago that summarized, uh, numerous aspects of your project and included uh, addressing the findings of facts necessary for today's special use?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And if you were to testify fully as to all of the information provided in said affidavit, would your testimony be consistent with the information provided in that affidavit?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. I have nothing further for Ms. Jimenez. I'd like to proceed with calling our expert witness, Mr. Joe Ryan.
Go right ahead.
Great. Um, Mr. Ryan, are you there?
I am.
Can you state your full name for the record and spell your last name?
Joseph M. Ryan, R Y A N.
Great. And your, and your address?
Ninety-four fifty-five South Point Avenue in Chicago.
And is it correct that you are a licensed commercial appraiser?
I am.
And have you testified in zoning hearings in the city of Chicago previously to today?
Yes, I have.
Great. Thank you. Um, Joe, you were the one who prepared the zoning consulting report dated March thirtieth, uh, two, uh, twenty twenty-one. Is that correct? With respect to the subject property? And are you, you aware that this report was provided? And are you, you aware that this report was provided to City of Chicago staff for purposes of today's hearing?
I was.
And if you were to fully testify as to the information and, and, uh, information provided in said zoning consulting report, would your testimony be consistent with the information provided in said report?
It would.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I have no further questions for our expert. And, uh, we're here for any questions that yourself or the board may have.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Um, any questions from the board? Okay. We'll take this under consideration.
Great.
Good luck, everyone, and thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Next up, we've got calendar number two oh six dash twenty-one dash S. Uh, which, uh, the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair slash beauty form.
Good afternoon, um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, my name is Agnes Black. I'm an attorney with Law Office of Mark Kupick and Associates, located seventy-seven West Chicago, um, uh, West Washington, Chicago. And I'm here on behalf of Den Salon LLC, uh, who is the applicant in the special use, uh, before you. And I have here with me today Monica Dan, hopefully, and, uh, Joe Ryan as our expert witness, if you would like to swear them in, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Monica, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Great. Monica, can you state your name and address?
Monica Dan, fifty-eight seventy North Lincoln Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six five nine.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Um, and Joe Ryan is sworn in and recognized.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, very, very briefly, the subject property is improved with an older two-story mixed-use building, which has an existing commercial, uh, uh, space on the ground floor. And Monica is proposing to establish her personal service business, which is a hair salon, within this existing commercial unit. And the approximate floor area of the proposed business is about fifteen hundred square feet. And she is proposing to have two workstations, so fairly small establishment. And with that, I would like to call, uh, call Monica first. Monica?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Monica Dan, fifty-eight seventy North Lincoln Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six five nine.
And you are the manager of Den Salon LLC?
Yes.
And you're proposing to establish a personal service use at the subject property located at fifty-eight seventy North Lincoln?
Yes.
And you are familiar with the existing conditions of the property and the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes.
And you will personally manage and work at this location?
Yes.
And what is your experience in the personal, uh, service industry?
I have been in industry for eight years, and throughout these eight years, I have gained my clientele base and managing skills. Um, in this location, I will plan to be doing haircuts, hair color, and bridal works such as updos and makeup.
Good. So in your opinion, the proposed special use is in the interest of the public convenience?
Yes.
And it will not have any significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood or the subject community?
Correct.
And, uh, you have, uh, surveyed the neighborhood, and you believe that there is unfulfilled demand for this proposed personal services for this community?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, the proposed salon will occupy an existing commercial space, correct?
Yes.
So you're not proposing any changes to the exterior envelope of the building?
No, just interior.
So the proposed special use is compatible in terms of site planning and building scale?
Yes.
And, uh, also the proposed special use compatible with the character of the neighborhood in terms of operating, uh, characteristics?
Yes.
And your proposed days and hours of operations are Tuesday to Wednesday, eleven AM to eight PM?
Yes.
Thursday and Saturday, nine AM to six PM?
Mm-hmm.
And you will be closed on Sunday and Monday?
Correct.
And how many workstations are you going to have?
I happen to have two workstations.
Okay. And you've notified your neighbors, and you've talked to Alderman, and no one voiced any objections to this proposed special use?
Correct.
Okay. And will you implement COVID precautions for your practice?
Yes, I will. So I'll be checking everyone's temperature, make sure they have their masks. There'll be sanitizing stations as well as thirty-minute, um, gaps in between clients, so that way I can sanitize and make sure everything's clean before the next client.
Very good. And Monica, you have signed an affidavit which contained your statements addressing all the criteria for this special use?
Yes.
And we have submitted, I have submitted your affidavit to the board?
Yes.
And if I continue to question, your testimony will be consistent with those statements contained in that affidavit?
Yes.
Okay. And that is all that I have of Monica. Joe, if I can call you next?
I'm here.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI, uh, ninety-four fifty-five South Point Avenue in Chicago.
Thank you, sir. And you have testified before this board many times?
Many times, yes.
Thank you, sir. And Joe, in preparation for this case, you have inspected the property, and you have seen the surrounding neighborhood?
I have.
So in your professional opinion, is it true that the proposed special use complies with all the applicable standards of the Chicago zoning ordinance?
I did. I cited all of the standards required for a special use in my report and explained why the property complies with those.
And you also believe that this proposed special use is in the interest of the public convenience at this location?
It is, yes.
And will not have any significant adverse impact on the community?
None whatsoever.
Okay. And in your report, you actually mentioned that there, there may be, uh, three personal service uses within one thousand feet, correct?
Correct.
But you have also noted that within the population of, within one mile radius and the average income, multiple personal service uses can coexist in that area. Is that correct?
In my opinion, yes, they can.
Perfect. And Joe, I have admitted your written report to the board?
Yes.
And, uh, if I am continued, if I continue to question you, will your testimony be consistent with your findings contained in that report?
Yes, they will.
Thank you, sir. And that is all that we have, and we are open for any questioning, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Um, thank you. Any questions from the board? We'll take this under consideration. Ms. Dan, thank you for your time today and coming in, and good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we're going to do a calendar number two oh seven dash twenty-one dash Z and two oh eight dash twenty-one dash Z. These are at nine nineteen West Wisconsin Street.
Mr. Chairman, once again, Agnes Black, attorney, uh, with Law Office of Mark Kupick and Associates, seventy-seven West Washington, uh, Chicago. And I'm here on behalf of Jessica Douglas and Ben Winger, who are the beneficiaries of the trust, which is the legal title holder of the property at nine nineteen West Wisconsin. And hopefully, I am joined by Ben Winger and also by the project architect Catherine Solova. Uh, are they on?
Yes. Good afternoon.
Hello, Ben. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you could please swear them in at this point?
Yes. Um, and counsel, really quick, as the Alderman's speaking on this one, I have a note that I know there's an indication of support, but unclear if she's speaking.
Uh, I, I don't think she's here. She's in full support. We had, uh, we had, uh, presented the project to her. We have, uh, discussed it. And we have a support letter on file.
Okay. Okay, great. Um, okay, then let's swear, let's swear that in. Um, Mr. Winger, will you please state your name and address?
Walter Benjamin Winger, and my address is nine one nine West Wisconsin Street, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six one four.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Um, counsel, are we swearing in, um, Jessica Douglas and Catherine Solova?
Jessica, I believe, was, had some conflict, so she's not on. But if, yes, Catherine should be on. Our project architect, Catherine?
Great. Catherine, if you're there, please state your name and address.
Catherine?
Oh, you, you're muted. I see you.
Oh, I'm here. I'm here.
There we go. If you could just state your name and address, please?
Catherine Delice Solova, address ten seventeen West Webster.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
All right. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, by way of short summary, the subject property is located at the southeast corner of North Bissell in West Wisconsin Avenue. And it is improved with an existing historic building built about hundred and forty-four years ago, which was converted into a condo building with two dwelling units in nineteen seventy-eight. And the applicants are the owners of the eastern unit. The two condos share a two-car garage, which is located at the rear of the property, and it's accessed off Wisconsin Avenue. The existing garage also features an existing garage rooftop deck, which is accessible by two means of ingress. Uh, an existing elevated walkway connecting the garage rooftop deck to the deck at the second floor level of the principal building, and also a spiral stair going from the garage rooftop deck to the grade and to the backyard area. The applicants were actually advised that these accessory structures were built more than forty years ago. And we actually have a condo survey from nineteen seventy-nine, which shows this elevated walkway to the garage rooftop deck. I did submit that survey to the board as an exhibit C. And due to the age of these accessory structures, uh, they, they simply need to be replaced to ensure their continued structural integrity. So the reason that we are here today is to address the maintenance and repair issues to preserve status quo of this property. So consequently, we have two variations before you. And variation number one, to reduce the minimum rear setback from thirty-seven point five to twenty point ninety-seven feet. And this is because both the elevated walkway and the spiral stairs are not listed as permitted obstructions in the rear setback. And then we have variation number two, and that variation is to relocate the required rear open space from grade to the garage rooftop deck to meet the required hundred and ninety-seven square feet of rear open space. And the little twist that we have for this variation is that we actually provide two hundred and ten square feet of actual open space at grade. But since that space does not meet the technical minimum dimensions, uh, required by the ordinance, this variation is triggered. And with that, uh, short explanation, I'd like to call my first witness, Ben Winger. Ben?
Yes.
Uh, please state your name and address again for the record.
My name is Walter Benjamin Winger. My address is nine one nine West Wisconsin Street, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six one four.
And, uh, you and your wife are the beneficiaries of the trust, which is the legal title holder?
We are.
And when did you purchase this property?
Uh, two thousand seventeen.
And when you purchased this property, back in two thousand seventeen, all of those existing accessory structures, meaning the garage rooftop deck, the elevated walkway, and the spiral stairs, they were already built?
They were.
And actually, you have consulted your architect, you have consulted several contractors, and based on their inspections, they advised you that these accessory structures were built, uh, more than forty years ago?
That's correct. At least more than forty years ago.
Right. And, uh, they also advised you that these accessory structures need necessary repairs and replacement to ensure their structural stability?
That's correct.
And also to bring them up to the current standards of the building code and the fire code?
That's correct.
All right. And their opinion was based on the fact that these accessory structures were built with outdated materials, which are no longer used today?
Correct.
And since this property contains existing improvements, again, we're talking about principal building, which was built hundred and forty-four years ago. We have accessory structures, which were built at least four years ago, probably more. You were faced with particular hardships in terms of site planning, since you had to work around these existing improvements. And also, you intend to preserve the existing beautifully landscaped courtyard that you have in the rear.
That, that's right. Uh, absent the variation, uh, being granted, we need to have two staircases, uh, which wouldn't be in a spiral design uh, to service the patio, uh, above the garage, the rooftop deck, as well as the, uh, patio that is adjacent, uh, to the master bedroom and comes right out. And, look, if we have to put two staircases, uh, into that courtyard area, that's gonna materially diminish the usable space. And, and for us, and, and this property, the, the courtyard and the patios, that's really an extension of the house. And that was probably the most important thing when we decided to buy this house uh, in twenty seventeen. The outdoor spaces is what we fell in love with. And to lose that would be frankly, a, a huge hardship. It, it should be a very different property than the one, uh, we, we decided to purchase in twenty seventeen.
Thank you. And, uh, since these non-conforming structures were built more than forty years ago, obviously, these site planning hardships were not created by you.
Correct.
And at the time when you purchased this property, back in two thousand seventeen, you actually had no way of knowing that any, any repairs or reconstruction of those, um, accessory structures were, will, will trigger these variations, correct?
That's correct.
And again, even though you have not created these hardships, as the current owner, you are charged with the responsibility to address any maintenance issues. So that's why we need those, those variations.
Yep. Correct.
And since there is no viable alternative location, uh, as you discussed, for the two separate, uh, sets of stairs, strict compliance with the rear setback and the rear yard open space would prevent you from making these necessary repairs and would basically prevent you from continued use of this essential outdoor living area, correct?
That's correct.
Did I ask you a question on that? It might be a silly question, but, so, um, assumably, the first floor has access to the patio from the first floor, and then the spiral staircase. Um, is the second floor's access to the rooftop, is that because it's a separate, se- separate unit of this two dwelling unit? Or is this really just to maintain so that there will always be rooftop access from the second floor as well as the first floor?
That's exactly correct. The, the access from the second floor, there's a sliding glass door that comes out of the master bedroom. That goes onto a patio, and then the elevated walkway is the connection point to the patio on top of the garage.
Okay, I see. So, and, and so just for the record, um, as, as we, there will, uh, and I, and I get that the, the bridge thing is a repair. It doesn't sound like a tear down. It's a repair. Um, there's two means of access to the rooftop.
To which rooftop?
To the, um, garage roof deck.
Yes, correct, correct. There's the spiral staircase, and then so long as the elevated walkway is, is in place, there's a second way to access it through the second floor.
Okay, okay.
Uh, should I continue, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, you can continue. And, and I guess you can, it's okay. You can streamline a bit.
Okay.
You know, get the, you know, get the applicant to testify on his own. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. So Ben, um, you, you have signed an affidavit which contained, uh, your statement, um, addressing all the standards of, of this variation, of both variations?
Yes, I did.
And if I continue to question you, will your testimony be consistent with your statements contained in that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Okay. And, uh, um, as we mentioned before, uh, we have a support, uh, letter from Alderman Smith. You have also talked to, uh, all your neighbors, and you've collected four support letters from your neighbors as well. So basically, everybody is in full support of your proposed project.
That, that's right.
Okay. And with that, I would like to call my next witness, Catherine?
Yep.
Uh, Catherine, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Catherine Delice Solova. My address is ten seventeen West Webster.
And you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
I am.
And you were retained by the applicants to prepare archite- architecture- And you were retained by the applicants to prepare architectural drawings for this project?
That's correct.
And we are asking for two variations for the proposed replacements and repairs, correct?
Correct.
And the first variation is to reduce the minimum rear setback to 20.97, because again, both the elevated walkway and the spiral stairs, even though they are existing for the past 40 years, they're not listed as permitted obstructions in the rear setback, correct?
That's correct.
And the second variation for the rear open space, we actually have 210 square feet of actual open space at grade, correct?
Correct.
But that space does not meet the technical requirements of of the dimensions required by the ordinance?
That's correct.
Hence, hence the variation.
Correct.
All right. And in your opinion, the requested variations are consistent with the stated purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance?
That's correct.
And the requested variations will not impair light and air to the adjacent property?
No, they won't.
We actually, the existing elevated walkway is setback about 19 feet from the south property line, which is the only adjacent neighbor.
That's correct.
Okay, good. And Catherine, you also sign an affidavit, which contained your statement addressing all the criteria for variations?
Yes.
And if I continue to question you, will your testimony be consistent with the statements contained in your affidavit?
Yes.
And that is all that I have of this witness, Mr. Chairman. If if you have any questions, or if any of the commissioners has any questions. Great. Thank you. Questions from the board?
Hi, this is Joanne Song. I have a question. If we separated the two variations, is one tied to the the elevated walkway and the other tied to the spiral staircase or both driving each one? Can you suss that out a little bit, please?
Yes. Thank you so much for that question, Commissioner. Yes, we need both variations for for the elevated walkway and the spiral staircase, because we have those two structures. They they basically technically limit the the area available for that technical required open space. So they are, you know, we cannot have the elevated walkway or maintain this the stairs without either of the variations. So we need both.
So hypothetically, if you were just, if you were getting rid of the elevated walkway and keeping the spiral staircase, you would still need both?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Because can you, for the, I get the open space, I think, you know, why the open space would be required? Can you, for the spiral staircase, tell me why the rear setback would be?
Yeah, forgive me. Can you please say that question again?
So just focusing on the spiral staircase, right now, just imagining the elevated walkway did not exist. Why would that trigger the rear setback?
Because again, the spiral, yeah, the spiral staircase is not a permitted obstruction in the rear setback. The only stairs, which are accessory to a garage rooftop deck that are permitted, are parallel to the wall of the garage. So since this is not the case, it it basically reduces the rear setback. And it also reduces the area available for the rear open space. And and again, we have 15 feet on one side for that courtyard. So more than 12 feet required. However, on the, and Catherine can back me up, on the east side and on the west side, we have a dimensions that are less than 12 feet of that courtyard available for rear open space. So hence hence that variation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you, everyone, for your time and enjoy your weekends. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. We are moving on now to two calendar numbers. Calendar number 209-21-S and 210-21-Z at 7401-45 Southeast End Avenue. I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation on the special use. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to expand an existing middle school to include high school in an existing one-story commercial building, with additions to accommodate up to 900 total students with up to 70 staff, provided that, number one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, AIM, Arts in Motion. Number two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated May 14, 2021, prepared by Wheeler-Turns Architects. Number three, all off-site improvements, including the sidewalk and associated improvements along Crugier Avenue, are designed and installed by the applicant in accordance with CDOT standards and requirements. Number four, all onsite improvements, including landscaping, are included or are completed prior to issuance of certificates of occupancy for the Phase One expansion, add ninth grade only. Number five, all off-site improvements are completed with Phase Two expansion on or before August 1, 2022. And number six, all students utilize the existing entrance at East End until the applicant has completed installation of the sidewalk along Crugier. Okay, so.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you for your service to Chicago. My name is Graham Grady. I'm a partner in law firm of Taff, Tinnis, and Hollister. And along with my co-counsel Sylvia Micus, we represent the applicant. Ms. Micus will present the application. But in summary, and as you stated, Art in Motion Charter School operates in a portion of the subject building pursuant to a special use granted by this board in 2019. And the school seeks a new special use today to expand into most of the rest of the building. We also seek a variation to adjust the landscaping. Thank you. Ms. Micus?
Thank you, Mr. Grady. As Graham mentioned, we're here today on behalf of AIM in terms of their expansion of their existing school use. In terms of details, the subject property, as you will see, is located within a C1-2 district, is currently improved with the one-story building in which the applicant operates, is performing art school for grades seven through nine. The building also includes an unrelated business, Closer Look Imaging, which is an MRI facility, which operates within 3,944 square feet. And the remaining 89,689 square feet of the building is vacant. The property also contains 90 parking spaces. As Graham mentioned, the applicant secured its existing special use back in 2019, which allowed for 400 students. Due to AIM's success, it is here today seeking a special use to expand its school operations to include grades 10 through 12 for a total of 900 students by the end of school year 2023-24. As part of its proposed expansion, applicant is seeking again to expand within the existing vacant space of the building and also construct a one-story entry vestibule with over on the, as a high school entrance to the building. And then they also propose to construct a partial two-story addition consisting of auditorium space. The proposed development will be constructed in three phases. The first phase will commence immediately upon approval of applicant's special use and variation and include the interior building expansion and also the parking lot improvements, including a 20,008-square-foot landscape plaza within the southeastern portion of the property. Phase two will include the addition of the one-story building vestibule, which again will serve as entry for high school students and visitors. And phase three includes the construction of the partial two-story addition, which will serve as auditorium space. The applicant's proposed a school expansion also includes bringing the existing 90-space parking lot into compliance with the current landscape ordinance, which will effectively reduce the number of parking spaces to 82. The applicant plans to establish a 20,008-square-foot landscape plaza within the southeast portion of the property, which will provide recreation and leisure uses for the use and enjoyment of the students as well as visitors. In order to proceed, applicant is also seeking a variation in order to locate a portion of the required 6,753-square-foot interior landscape area within its proposed landscape plaza and also to reduce the required number of interior trees from 56 to 38. Again, as stated before in DPD's recommendation, applicant has agreed that all site offsite improvements, including the sidewalk extension on Crugier, and will be installed in accordance with CDOT standards and requirements and completed within Phase Two expansion by August 1, 2022. Here today with us are Kara Bickamay, Principal of AIM Charter School, Chris Ann Marie Spencer, applicant's project architect, applicant's landscape architect, Bradley McCauley of Site Sangro.
Sylvia, you're on mute. Sylvia, you're on mute.
Oh, sorry about that. I'll just continue on, because I will introduce each each of our witnesses. An applicant's traffic consultant, Luwe Abuna of KLOA. Also available for questions is Larry Kearns, applicant's project architect. Ms. May, please state your name, address, and business or profession for the record.
Kara May, Director of Art in Motion Creative Arts School, 7415 Southeast End, Chicago, Illinois 60649.
And Ms. May, as you are aware, Taff submitted findings of fact.
Counselor, sorry, I'll swear. I'll swear everyone in as they say their address. Ms. May, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Ms. May, as you are aware, Taff submitted findings of fact in your affidavit to the board, which were submitted into evidence. If you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. May. Ms. Spencer, please state your name, address, and business or profession for the record.
Chris Ann Marie Spencer, project architect.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Spencer. And can you state your address as well?
2618 North Francisco, Chicago, Illinois 60647.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
And Ms. Spencer, as you're aware, Taff submitted findings of fact, architectural plans in your signed affidavit to the board, which were submitted into evidence. If asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings of fact, architectural plans, and affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer. Mr. McCauley, please state your name, address, and business or profession for the record.
Bradley McCauley. I live at 1727 South Indian Avenue, Chicago, Illinois 60616. My profession's licensed landscape architect.
Thanks. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
And Mr. McCauley, as you are aware, Taff submitted findings of fact, landscape architectural plans, and your signed affidavit to the board, which were submitted into evidence. If asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings of fact, architectural plans, and affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. Ms. Dart, please state your name, address, and business or profession for the record.
Kathleen Dart, D-A-R-T. My address is 47 West Polk Street, Chicago, Illinois 60605. I'm an Illinois State General Appraiser and an MAI.
Thank you. And Ms. Dart, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And we recognize your expertise as well, based off of plenty of appearances in front of the board.
Thank you, sir.
And Ms. Dart, have you prepared a report? I'm sorry, Ms. Dart, you were retained by the applicant to conduct an impact study regarding applicant's proposed expand expansion of its school use at the property, correct?
Correct.
And Ms. Dart, have you prepared a report detailing your analysis, findings, and conclusions? And is that report in the materials submitted to the board and admitted into evidence?
Yes, it is.
And Ms. Dart, is it your opinion that the proposed special use will comply with all applicable standards of the Chicago zoning ordinance?
Yes, it will.
And is it your opinion that the proposed special use is in the interest of the public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood or community?
Yes.
Is it your opinion that the proposed special use is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning, building scale, and project design?
Yes, it is.
Is it your opinion that the proposed special use is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics?
Yes, it is.
And is it your opinion that the proposed special use is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes.
If you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your report?
Yes, it would.
And also, if asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your report, specifically that the proposed development is consistent with the general criteria for approval of applicant's proposed variation?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, Ms. Dart. Mr. Abuna, please state your name, address, and business or profession for the record.
My name is Luwe Abuna, A-B-O-O-N-A. I'm a traffic engineer with KLOA, located at 9575 West Higgins Road in Rosemont, Illinois.
Thanks, Mr. Abuna. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Right. And Mr. Abuna, your firm was retained by the applicant to prepare a traffic report examining the background traffic conditions and assess the impact that the proposed expansion may have on traffic conditions in the area and determine if any improvements would be needed in order to accommodate traffic generated by the proposed school expansion.
Yes.
And if you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with findings and conclusions contained in your report?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you, Mr. Abuna. The applicant has met with and had several discussions with Alderman Michelle Harris of the Eighth Ward, who is in support. We also held a community meeting, at which time applicant presented its proposed expansion. And we are unaware of any objections. We are available for any questions. Thank you, as this concludes our presentation.
Thank you, everyone. Any questions from the board? You know, one clarification, Counselor, sorry if you touched on it already. Just could you tell us a little bit more about the, there's this closer look imaging medical diagnostics portion of the property? Can you just give us a little bit of an overview of what's going on there in relation to the school?
That is a separate business. This is a multi-tenant building. So that is a separate business that has been there for several years. And there is no association with the school. They just, both are tenants within the same building.
And that's the only, is that the only separate business on the?
Yes.
I got it.
Yes, we will be expanding throughout the entire remainder of that vacant space.
Okay, perfect. Okay, good. So no, any other questions from the board? Then thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time and for coming on, and we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I will note, on the last matter that we just finished up, in the recommendation that I read, being told it was updated last night to read for provision number four, it's updated to 10th grade. I read 9th grade. So I'm just going to reread that one provision of the recommendation by the department. And it's number four, provided, number four, all onsite improvements, including landscaping, are completed prior to the issuance of certificates of occupancy, COO, for the Phase One expansion, add 10th grade only. Thanks, everyone. Last minute update. All right, we're going to do, we're going to do two more. And then we're going to break for lunch. So let's go to calendar number 211-21-Z. You can call from the board whenever you're present.
Good morning, Mr. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name, for the record, is Tom Moore. And we should have with us Bill and Kelsey Elliott.
Good afternoon, members of the board.
And so there they are. Mr. Chairman, would you mind swearing them in, please?
Yes, perfect. So. Kelsey, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Kelsey Elliott. 3084 South.
Three zero eight four South Lock Street.
Thank you. And do you swear, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead.
That's okay. Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh eight.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And Bill, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is William Elliott, E L L I O T T. My address is three zero eight four South Lock Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh eight.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I always am reluctant to choose between the husband and wife, so Bill or Kelsey. Which one of you would like to be the spokesperson?
I'd be happy to, Tom.
Okay, thank you. So you've told the board who you are. What's your relationship to this property?
My wife and I have been the owners of it since August of two thousand nineteen.
Okay, and it it's a property, Kelsey has actually done a very elaborate study of all its iterations, but it actually, this building, the bill, the, one of the buildings here was at least a portion of it was started right after the Civil War. Is that right?
That's correct.
And it's been a horse stable, a bar, a electric bulb manufacturer. It's it's been all sorts of different businesses throughout its history. Is that right?
Yes, as well as residential property.
And then there are two, there have been for, as long as anybody can remember, there have been two existing residences there as well. Is that right?
Yes.
And it's a triangular lot. It has no access to the alley directly. And it's also a vaulted sidewalk lot, so there's a a significant drop from the sidewalk down to the the property itself. Is that right?
Yes.
So as a result, and it's been empty, and what you want to do is, and there is no market here for a commercial building in the middle of this residential neighborhood. Is that right?
Yes.
So what you want to do is add two apartments, but there's no place you can put two more parking spaces. Is that right?
Correct.
And so you had, we went to the Alderman, and he had a community meeting, and he supported a zoning change that would allow a total of four units. And at that community meeting, we had absolutely no objectors, and you've talked to your surrounding neighbors, and as far as you know, there are no objections. Is that right?
That's correct, Tom. And I would just note that our only actual adjacent neighbor, the owner occupier at thirty seventy-eight South Lock Street, Annie Martinez, he's been supportive of the entire project.
Okay, and the so what we're asking the board to do is to give us a variance to allow you to add the two residential units without adding two additional parking spaces. Is that right?
Yes.
And you and I have filled out an affidavit where you addressed all of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance. And if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with it. Is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that's, I think we have, this really isn't an architectural issue. We've submitted architectural plans. That's pretty much our case, together with the affidavit and addressing each of the criteria.
Right. And yeah, so, Mr. Elliott, can you just describe for us a little bit about, a little more about the parking situation in the neighborhood? Where would you would, you know, kind of, is there street parking? Is it transit nearby?
I'd be happy to. There's ample street parking. There's never, even over this last big blizzard we had when Bridgeport was like awash with folding chairs, the area around this building was, still had ample street parking. There's a curb cut that we are willing to eliminate during this project because it'll no longer be needed. That should hopefully add a couple of street parking spots. Additionally, we are located exactly at one bus stop, the Thirty First Street Bus. There's another bus, the Archer Bus. It's about a block and a half away. And we're also a very short distance to the Ashland Orange Line Stop.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, it was, we we actually measured that because at one point we thought we could make this with the Alderman's support a TOD, a transit oriented, and and we were just I don't remember exactly, but it was a very short fifty feet or a hundred feet or something outside the thirteen hundred and twenty to the Orange Line Stop. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? All right. Thank you both for coming, and we'll take this under consideration.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Yep. Have a good weekend. Okay, so next up, Tom, I believe you're staying with us. We're moving to calendar numbers two twelve dash twenty-one dash Z and two thirteen dash twenty-one dash Z before we break for a lunch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully I have Mr. Doug Fisher, who is the principal of the owner, and also his architect, Lazlo.
I'm here, Lazlo.
And is Doug Fisher here, too?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind swearing them, please?
Yeah, Mr. Fisher, will you please state your name and address?
Douglas Fisher, home address or work address, the the dress associated with the property is a business address at one thousand North Halsted in Chicago.
Okay. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great. All right. And LaVoe, will you please state your name and address?
My name is Lazlo Sumovic. I'm at sixty-five twelve North Arctician in Chicago.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Take it away, Tom.
Thank you very much. So my name is Tom Moore, and this is, we're on the theme of parking today. Doug, your firm, you and your partners own this building for some twenty years or more. Is that right?
Actually, we acquired it in June of two thousand eleven.
Okay, and the it's, how many units are in the building, existing?
Twenty-six residential units, and the commercial space, when I acquired the property, had five, about five thousand square feet, and there were five thousand, or five existing commercial tenants.
Okay, and over the years, one by one, those commercial tenants have left. Is that right?
That's correct. The last remaining tenants was Dennis, who was on the north side of the property, and he broke his lease a year and a half early.
Okay, and during that ten years or so, you've tried to replace these tenants with commercial tenants. Is that right?
Yes, we hired a number of different leasing brokers to lease the space as well as, you know, worked the the area ourselves to to find tenants.
And you've had no success, and gradually the entire ground floor, front and western, has become vacant. Is that right?
That's correct. It's currently a hundred percent vacant.
So your proposal would be to add seven handicap accessible units, residential units, to the building. Is that right?
Correct.
And throughout the history of the building, the building's kind of formed like an H, and the the property on Fitch has kind of a a courtway kind of feel to it. But the back, in that part of the H, had a loading space that serviced the commercial units. Is that right?
Yes, it was a commercial loading zone.
And so what you and your architect, and then we went to the Alderman and the community with, was the idea of turning that zoning, that loading zone into additional parking spaces that would serve some of the seven residential handicap accessible units that you would be adding. Is that right?
Correct.
And so we're in front of the board today asking to waive the commercial or the existing loading deck. And since you'll be able to put four parking spaces, including an accessible parking space there, we're asking them to waive three parking spaces. Is that right?
Yes.
And you have fourteen garages across the back of the building. Is that right?
Yes.
And you market those first to your tenants, but consistently, you haven't filled them with your tenants. Is that right?
That's correct. A number of them are leased to non-residents of my building.
And that's, you would first give them to the tenants if if they wanted them, but your existing tenants have have never been filled them or wanted to fill them. Is that right?
Correct. Since my ownership, we've not had sufficient interest from the building tenants to lease all the spaces.
Okay, and also to the immediate south, there is a a commercial doctor's office or something that has additional parking if anyone wanted to rent parking off-site. Is that right?
I've had conversations. I know the the, it's an orthodontist, and I know them well, and they're very good neighbors. And they have a big parking lot that they don't utilize the entire thing, and and we've had conversations that they're open to. If I had overflow, that they'd be open to leasing spaces.
And so we went to the Alderman, and she, after having a community meeting, she supported Alderman Silverstein supported a zoning change because the zoning we had before wouldn't, the board wouldn't have the authority to waive three parking spaces. So with her support, you changed the zoning and then got this denial so we could come in front of the board. Is that right?
Correct.
And both the Alderman and the community supported that plan. Is that correct?
We had overwhelming support, very positive support from the community, which the meeting was well attended.
And you you have committed to making all of those seven new residential units accessible, and the, there is a bus stop immediately in front of the building. Is that right?
Correct.
So you don't know how many of the units will actually be utilized by people who need the accessibility, but the experience is that that often those people don't drive as much, but there would be a bus, accessible bus right in front of the, right in front of the building, should they need it. Is that right?
Yes, correct.
That's all the questions I have of Mr. Fisher. He's available for additional questions, and I just briefly asked Mr. Sumilek about, oh, I'm sorry, Doug, if you were to continue to testify, you and I handed in an affidavit where you addressed all of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it. Is that right?
Correct. In fact, if I could just add, we did submit the reasonable return analysis, which gave a history of of our ownership and why, how we ended up here, and the value of adding these residential units, not only to the neighborhood, but to the building as well, which would I think be a real win-win for not only myself, but also for the neighborhood.
And while there is no demand for storefronts at this this part of Western Avenue, there is a demand for reasonably priced apartments. Is that right?
That's correct. And if I could just add, right now with the existing zoning that we have, we're allowed to add four residential residential units. The issue with that is that it would be costly to add those four units, and the square footage would be pretty significant that in order to make it worthwhile, the rent would be, have to be higher. If I were able to add the seven units, the rents that I would be, that would make the investment worthwhile, would be about thirty percent less than if we only used four units, because the square footage would be lower, and I think it'd be much more in keeping and attractive to the tenant base in in the area.
Okay, that's all the questions I'd ask of Mr. Fisher. Mr. Sumilek, are you available?
I am.
And did, and the chairman did swear you in. Is that right?
Correct.
And up on the screen right now is a rendering of how you envision that the the newly, the storefronts converted into residential units might look. Is that right?
Correct.
And you have worked out a a plan whereby they could all be accessible. Is that right?
That is correct.
And the, in, also where you can add four parking spaces where the commercial loading zone previously was, and in your opinion, that all works and it fits in, it doesn't change the essential character of the neighborhood. Is that right?
That is correct.
And you'll, your plans comply, otherwise comply with all of the laws and ordinances necessary. Is that right?
Yes.
And you and I worked out a affidavit whereby you addressed each of the the criteria necessary for the board to grant this, these two variances, and if you were to continue to testify, testify consistently with it. Is that right?
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, that's our case in essence, but both of these gentlemen are available for questions.
Thanks, Counselor. So any questions from the board? All right. Thank you, everyone, for the for the case. We'll take this one under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna motion for a lunchtime recess. Let's make it forty-five minutes. We've got a good pace going, so it'll go until one thirty PM Central Standard Time. So Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Great. And I'm a yes, so we will reconvene again at one thirty PM Central Standard Time. Thank you, everyone.